Sina, are you ready?
I'm ready.
Okay. So Chief Baxter.
Mayor Walker, members of council, here before you tonight with a resolution recommending that you adopt to adopt a to vote to approve an emergency declaration. As you know, the governor of Virginia earlier this afternoon declared a state of emergency in the Commonwealth due to the threat to public safety to the residents of the Commonwealth due to the COVID-19 pandemic. That risk also is present in our community as well. The declaration of emergency does several things. First and foremost, it streamlines procurement authority for the city manager. It activates our regional emergency operations plan and the emergency operations center, part of that plan. And it also allows the city manager, under his executive authority, to regulate the use, sale, and distribution of food and other commodities. So as your fire chief and emergency management coordinator, I strongly recommend passage of this resolution to adopt the emergency declaration.
Thank you. And Sina, could you hear?
I could.
Okay.
Do we need a motion?
Yeah, I will make the motion to adopt the resolution authorizing the city manager to declare a local emergency.
Second? Is there a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, that carries five to zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
And one thing I would like to ask is just for the communication team to work on what could to make sure that we maintain community engagements before our public meetings if we have to limit the number of citizens who can participate. They are still, you know, need a way to call in Facebook Live, message, you know, email, whatever. So if you all could just start thinking about what those measures could look like if we, you know, decide that that's necessary. Okay, thank you. All right, so now I will turn things over to Dr. Richardson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Members of council and the public, good afternoon. First, we want to start out with this being our second work session pertaining to the budget. Tonight we'll focus on outside and nonprofit agencies. And our agenda is as follows. Basically, what we want to do is just go ahead and look back at the items that we discussed on March 5th and talk about those in terms of the decisions that we were requesting council to make. If we can go ahead and make those decisions at this meeting, that would be greatly appreciated. And then also too, moving on, we'll talk about the outside nonprofit agency funding. And I know that we'll have a, well, Chrissy will be talking about the contractual agencies and Ryan is here as well as Kaki to talk about the vibrant community funds. And then we'll try to wrap up close of time since we're here from five to eight. And then we'll open up for public comment. If y'all are listening.
We are.
Okay.
We're trying to get an agreement about something.
So moving on, one of the key things, the city council's decision points that we're looking at trying to make tonight is basically talked about the funding for the schools, which was at 1.8 million. Also too, to discuss the COLA between two or three percent. And the difference of that one percent is about $520,000. As we proposed in the budget for FY '21 was two percent to be to be in consideration with our counterparts in the county who are also getting a two percent raise. And then also too, the adjustments to the chat program and the amount of 389,000, as well as looking at the overall departmental new request approximately of $8 million, which, you know, we discussed and that was a question that was asked. So we wanted to bring it back before the council. And then on the last one, which was asked of us to be able to do at the last meeting, was to come back with some proposed reductions. And we looked at various items and we wanted to make sure, as was mentioned by the council, to look at reductions that will not impact the departments as a whole. So we came back with 1.2 million in reductions. It was, you know, it took us a lot of time to come up with those numbers in terms of being able to do that because we've mentioned before, it was tough doing this budget this year and trying to make sure that we were balanced. But these are some options that we are presenting to you tonight in terms of those proposed reductions. So you would have an additional 1.2 million dollars. But we can further discuss that as we go through the presentation.
So would you like for us to discuss these now? I think we should know if we even have this money to work with. So...
Yes.
If you have questions about any of the items or needing clarification on any of the items, we're happy to answer any questions you have about them.
So the city manager's officer salary and benefits proposed reductions page, are there any questions about that? Parks and Rec temps, 25,000. Are there any questions about that?
I guess it just assumes a certain, go ahead.
So when Parks does their initial calculations, they assume roughly 100% to 99 to 100% build on all their temporary positions. As we've gone through the budget, we've worked with Parks and Recreation, they went back and did another look at their staffing. On the temporary, they realized historically they've been at lower levels in certain areas. And so that as part of our initial reductions that we looked at with the initial budget to close that gap that we showed you back in February, we had some of those. And this is just looking at it again and another reduction of a slight percentage here or there on some of their temporary staffing. This is a lot of the would be a little more on the, according to our Parks and Rec director, this would be a little bit more on the front desk side and the forward facing side. So that's where they had not looked at as much.
There's no anticipation to affect operations?
There could, I mean, it would just mean there would be, I don't know, the exactly, I don't think they've exactly worked out. Does that mean there's instead of being two people at the front desk, there's one person? I think they're, they would look at it and do and make the changes to minimize direct service impact as much as possible. And there would, there is the potential for a slight service impact potentially along the way that when you're, when you're registering for programs or having to register at a different location, those kind of things. But it wouldn't eliminate anything in that aspect.
So this is an area based on the fact that I work there and that I won't be able to vote on. Can I state, Mr. Blair, where is he? Should I, can I state my support or no? Or lack of, or whatever?
I would advise not to.
All right. So how do you all feel about that?
My own feeling about both of these, the first two, is that those are the kinds of reductions that the folks closest to the problem and the managers closest to the problem are in a better position to assess than I am. And so I'm, that's a situation where I, unless somebody tells me that there's a compelling reason why that judgment is not correct, I'm inclined to, you know, if they say they can save 41,000 bucks that way, that's cool.
Okay. Yep. Sina, are you good to go?
I'm good to go.
Okay. Vehicle and equipment replacement funds? 400,000, one-time reduction?
Is that a reserve fund for replacement in the future? Is that like a specific vehicle or number of vehicles right now that would not be replaced? I don't...
So the 400,000, right now in the budget, there is 1.3 million dollars that's budgeted to go to the equipment replacement fund to purchase replacement vehicles. The fleet manager has several different scenarios, fleet replacement. There are also some funds that are budgeted over and to build up money to buy cars over time. So one of the biggest things out of this is that there was an extra bus for pupil transportation included here that in agreement with the schools, that's about 143,000, that they've agreed to postpone. The fleet managers agreed to that. So that's a big chunk of this. The other may or may not impact vehicles that could be purchased this year. There, we're looking at, there is a small reserve there that may be able to, and the fleet manager is looking at that. But it would be a one-time.
So this isn't going to help us operationally then, if you're saying it's one-time?
Well, it's one-time in the sense that, you know, our needs are probably greater than 1.3, but can we delay those purchases this year? Yes. But at some point, you're going to have to look at adding that back in.
Adding it back in as opposed to just squeezing another year's life out of something?
Adding it back in eventually because, so for this year, you could squeeze it in and push the purchases back a year or two and save the 400,000. But at some point, you know, to get the fleet where it needs to be, it would have to be an add back to the general fund at some point, whether it's all at one time or a little bit over time. You know, eventually you have the fleet needs.
I guess what I'm wondering is that, is this effectively saying, you know, a year or two from now, we will have, we will need to have spent another 400,000 other than what we might otherwise have expected to make up for this?
I would say not other than what you expect. I think it's better to say this is kind of kicking the can a little bit, that basically we're just putting off purchases that we had originally intended to make in the current, in next year, and we're just delaying those a bit.
What is our general replacement schedule for fleet vehicles?
Paul, do you want to speak to that?
Good afternoon, Paul Oberdorfer. Can you repeat the question again, please?
What is our general replacement schedule for fleet vehicles?
So on the small fleet, it is 10 to 12 years and about 80,000 miles because of our 10 square mile area. Do you want, I can run through the equipment. I mean, there's different classes of equipment, so it depends on what it is. The fire apparatus runs on a different schedule than the heavy equipment and utilities and public service, but generally the small fleet is an eight to 10-year replacement schedule depending on utilization.
I'm sorry, you said the...
The small fleet is a 10 to 12-year replacement schedule?
And that's the same with our buses, right?
No, the buses are on a 12 to 13, depending on which off year we buy the extra bus. And again, that's based on state regulations and compliance with safety.
And are police vehicles on a different schedule than that?
The police vehicles, because they're highly utilized, they cycle out quicker. So they're on eight to 10-year cycles. Some of the vehicles are in the 14-year range, 16-year range, and that's just because we haven't had the funds available to cycle them out fast enough.
And what is the fire?
Fire is not part of this. They're purchased through the CIP. So fire trucks are not part of this, are not part of these dollars.
Okay. What is their replacement schedule? I mean, is this... All right.
Okay, hey Sina, it's Emily. It's 15 to 20 years, depending on the type of equipment. The engines are on a 15-year and the ladder trucks, the aerials are 20-year. Assuming we can get that many years out of them, the last ladder truck barely made it to 20, but that's what we try to do.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions? Is there agreement there? All right. Employee compensation, 94,681 dollars.
So that item as part of our overall employee compensation and benefits pool, we have a miscellaneous expenses line which goes towards several things such as, I believe, our unemployment insurance, our, there are any employee recognition, there is our, there's a parking program for employees that is paid for out of there. We also have the, within that parking program is the bicycle and carpooling, stipends that are paid for out of there. It's a long list of things that we go through and pay for out of there. And we had increased that in the current year and we were just saying we would go back to level funding and make do with the level funding at this point. I think we're comfortable with being able to do that at this point.
Okay. Is there agreement on that?
I guess what is the anticipated impact? Is it like fewer stipends or?
I mean, it's hard, it's hard to say. We've been, I mean, we have been operating, we had reduced this amount in the FY '20 budget year, and so we were increasing it back to, back up. And based on, after relooking at that and based on what we're anticipating spending in actuals this year, because the parking program, depending on who's biking, carpooling, or that, that will have some cycling and some other things in there, have some fluctuation. We think we will be fine and won't have any impact on those programs we're providing to the employees.
All right, okay, thank you.
All right, is there agreement there? Sina?
Yes, as long as we're not, yeah, as long as we're not taking anything away.
Okay, so the ECC contribution change, 90,645 dollars based upon new budget estimates provided by ECC. Sounds pretty straightforward. All right. Parking transfer, 100,000 dollars. Any questions?
Agree.
What is again, the amount in the parking fund?
In the parking fund? Right now, it ended FY '19 with just about 1.7 million. This, we had in the general fund budget last year to transfer 1.2 from parking back to the general fund. We had, because the plan was to sort of wean the general fund off of those parking revenues, we had decreased that. But knowing that we're where we are, we actually just funded that at level, so we would be transferring the same amount back to the general fund.
Sina, support?
Yep.
All right.
I'm good.
A hundred thousand dollar transfer, is that supposed to be from the golf fund? Paul, she's, you have two return?
No, it's two.
Two, okay.
Because we, the general fund was supplementing the golf fund by 100,000 dollars. And so this was just, we were going to not transfer that money and allow the golf course to operate on its own revenues.
Can I ask, Mr. Blair, can I ask questions about this or no?
Yes, ma'am, I think on the golf fund you can.
Okay. So this isn't self-supporting, correct? So how, what is the plan to?
So several years ago, we started a, we started trans, the golf fund came in and they were anticipating not enough revenues to cover their expenses for that year. And over time, that transfer has been reduced over the years because the revenues have increased and they've done some expenditure trimming. And we've gotten it down to approximately 100,000 dollars. And this would take that transfer away from them and that they would have to do. Mr. Brown could probably speak more to what that would mean in terms operationally, but this would just make it so that they were 100% reliant on nothing but the fees provided for the golf services.
Yeah, we're pretty confident that the revenue will be following the same trend it's been following the last couple of years, that we could handle expenses for deferred maintenance and some improvements through that fund. If not, then it would go back to probably our operating fund, or we just defer to another year.
So are there plans to increase fees?
A slight increase for next year, yes.
What is the slight increase? Could you give me a sense of, what is it right now?
Different fees, but you know, basically going from 25 to 28.
For around?
For around, depending on different, there's a bunch of different fees in there. A bunch of package deals and stuff.
It's a flat fee system?
Yes, ma'am.
Any other questions? Is there support? Sina?
Yeah, if they think they can do it, yes.
Unity Days?
No.
Oh, you don't want to hear anything?
Well, I can hear something, okay, sorry.
I mean, I agree, but I have had some...
I'm sorry, I should have listened first, sorry.
Within this figure, I spoke with Mr. Wheeler, could probably talk about this a little bit better as well, but I spoke with Mr. Wheeler on this. And of this 81,500, approximately 75 to 80% of that would be for the grants that we would be giving out to the agencies to be able to hold the events. The rest would be for marketing for the following set of Unity Days, because we put in the 15,000 for the marketing for the upcoming Unity Days. So we would have, so approximately 20,000 roughly would be for the marketing for Unity Days 2021, if I'm doing the years correct in my head. So that, so that's how it breaks out, just so you know how the funding was broken out between the, those two activities.
Yeah, but this year they asked for an increase to start the marketing earlier.
Because we didn't have the extra money last year allocated, I don't think.
No, it was 100,000 dollars, correct? Yeah, so it's less. Right?
At part of the year-end, we had allocated 15,000 dollars towards the marketing efforts for Unity Days. And I'll let Mr. Wheeler pick up from there.
Correct, so it's slightly less than last year. Keep in mind, the 81,500, some of that will be held back for 2021, for the first six months of next year. So there would be less available overall.
But you spent all of it last year, right?
Correct, but we did 85 events over four months last year. This year, the events will only be between August 1st and August 12th.
What are your thoughts on what that could mean from a funding, of a scaling of funding perspective?
Well, I mean, that's, you get to make these decisions. The, I guess what I would say is it's important, I think, to have a Unity Days program, and whether that's a mix of, you know, private funding, other in-kind gifts, much the way we do the Grand Illumination, that one is more heavily funded through donations and in-kind sponsorships. But I think at this point, early on in Unity Days, especially as we head into the next anniversary and with the statues, I mean, really until we resolve the future of our downtown parks, I think it's really important for the city to have a program in place for doing things come August.
Thank you.
If we, if we didn't, the amount of money that you would do for the marketing of the next year, we could hold off on that type of a decision until a later time if we had to.
So part of our plan, if you made an allocation, would be to hold back some of those funds for next year because that would be the prudent thing to do.
Yeah.
So that we don't have to come to you for fund balance? Should we want to continue next year?
So my issue with this is, you know, starting stuff and then stopping it, and is this the thing to cut funding from? I mean, you know, the list and why, and the reasons why we're cutting. So I don't support it, but...
No, and I don't have an interest in us not moving forward. I was just trying to hear from him what other ways we could execute these events without relying so much on city funding, because I'll be honest, the Grand Illumination is a very strong event, and it is relying on other revenue sources.
And one difference there, and Mr. Rice, the deputy director of communications, is in the corner behind us, but he does all that work for the Grand Illumination, but that's been built up over many years.
Yeah.
And so those relationships are in place, people know what we're doing, and I think it's a little easier to raise outside support for that.
No, I'm fine with that, including it in our options.
And I also think in terms of the, I understand that we could give less grants and we could do less activities, but is that even the direction that we should be taking? So I know...
I guess I'm, you know, I'm torn on it because as someone who was there in 2017 who was involved in organizing Unity Days, has never been something that's connected with me, but I recognize that my perspective is limited and probably, and definitely not the majority of the community. And also recognizing that, you know, the decisions we make now are tough. I mean, it's, you know, do we fund this or Sin Barreras? Or, you know, those are the kind of decisions we're making. I mean, I guess, I think particularly in the context of, you know, we know that there's going to be changes to our parks coming this summer. I guess I would lean towards keeping it, recognizing that there could be a lot wrapped up in those changes to our parks downtown now that there's been change at legislation at the state level.
I guess the question that I have is, it sounds to me like you are expressing a rationale for why there might be less money required for marketing, for example, because you've got one 12-day period, let's say, that we're talking about instead of four months' worth of events. I mean, is that a fair interpretation of what you were saying?
Right, and that's why we've reduced the amount that's in this request, yes.
And so if we, if, I guess, if we take 81,5 away, what is left? Zero.
The fund balance we have.
For marketing.
You previously approved for marketing.
It was what, 15,000?
Correct.
Okay.
But a substantial part of it is those grants for all those different events that happen.
That's right. The idea behind Unity Days is it's city-sponsored but community-driven. So the community really comes to the table and presents the proposals they want to see taking place in August.
So effectively, if we did this, we would be taking Unity Days from a budget of 100,000 to a budget of 15,000?
No, we would be eliminating Unity Days because there's no use to marketing for anything that you cannot fund the way it operates. Would you market?
Okay, well, I'm just, okay, I guess I'm thinking, just in terms of budget numbers rather than program, but do I understand that the suggestion of removing this effectively means that the only money that's left in to spend on Unity Days from the city is 15,000?
Correct.
And I know the mayor's point would be that that doesn't get you anything.
In the future, such a marketing allocation, again, if it was structured like Grand Illumination in the future, that might be where we end up. But I think in its second year, I think Unity Days would really depend upon council support to make these activities happen.
And let me say, this is another example of the kind of thing that I find very difficult of where we're making, in essence, programmatic policy decisions in the context of a budget amount. And if we decide, whatever we decide we want the future of Unity Days to be, the idea of the budget ought to be to realize that decision, not to have the budget drive the programmatic decision.
So I definitely appreciate it, even though I never want to be anywhere where there's a lot of people. So I wouldn't have necessarily created Unity Days. I enjoyed the looking and reading about the events that I didn't attend, and I appreciate the enthusiasm that citizens had surrounding the events. So even though it's something that I don't want to relive and have, you know, every year, there were people who, for them, this was way... So even though it's something that I don't want to relive and have, you know, um, every year, there were people who, for them, this was, uh, uh, weighed, um, a healing mechanism for them. Um, and so, and you had a very diverse group of people participating and wanting to figure out what, um, these days look like. So I just, I think that part is important, um, and with the direction we're going now, we may still not, you know, maybe wouldn't be having events anyway in August. So we may not have too much to discuss anyway. But anyway.
Well, I mean.
Virtual Unity Days.
It sounds like there's already a majority to to not include that in the cuts, so.
I'm against including it.
I am too.
Including it as a cut or including the money in the budget?
Not including.
Okay.
And, um, all right, we're moving, Council Strategic Initiatives, three hundred and sixty-one thousand, um.
What is this, the total amount that we have right now?
Yeah, and so we put this on there so that, uh, not saying we would wipe out the entire fund, but if you wanted to use any portion of what you have allocated for your strategic initiatives for any of these programs. Or, say, an eight, we run out of, when we get into our agency conversations, we run out of dollars and you need twenty thousand dollars for the agencies, you could, you know, do something like that. It was just, if you, there was a program out there that you said this really meets our strategic initiatives, and in order to, as a budgetary savings, and in order to ensure that program continues, we we could use some of these dollars now. That was our thought process behind including that amount, um, because I believe you had initially asked for the one million, and we tried to shoot it a little bit above that, so.
The one million, where is it?
It's at one point two six.
Oh, you mean, I thought one million for the fund.
Oh, no, 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 no.
It's not here.
One million in proposed reductions, and so we we did, we did not assume that you would completely wipe out your strategic initiatives fund. Um, but this, but by including that, it got us above the, um, one million dollar ask, and so that's why we included the full amount.
So I don't support this, um, where is everyone else at?
I'm open to us using portions of it, depending on where we are trying to land and how we can get there.
I mean, for me, it comes down to what any portion of it would be allocated to, I mean, I'm inclined not to, uh, cut much, if anything, from it. Um, but you know, if it's a decision between, say, like, funding, like, uh, you know, well, granted, we don't make school budget decisions. But you know, if it was a matter of, like, some amount of the strategic initiatives fund going towards funding, like, a a literacy, uh, coach in new schools or something like that, I think that's a decision in terms of just the value of being it, being it spent. What's the value of being spent that way versus what we could potentially, uh, spend it on off-budget cycle? It's just, it's hard to game out, but I'm inclined to keep as much of it as as we can, but I'm not saying absolutely nothing from it if, you know, we're forced to make a decision on a position or something that's either yes or no.
And my feeling about it is, if we were to say that we're trying to find, uh, I I guess I had, I had talked about a couple of different numbers, uh, last time around. Let's say, let's say we decide our target is actually a million dollars, uh, and we've, looking at this list, we're going to keep the money for Unity Days. Uh, if we then cut the Council Strategic Initiatives in half to ba- basically a hundred eighty thousand dollars, that gets us to within pocket change of one million dollars. But the question I had, we had talked last time about certain, uh, contr- contributions and certain reserve funds, that I had the sense that the staff was saying, yeah, we could live with some, some reductions in some of those transfers to the reserve funds. Like the Debt Service Fund, you were saying that, yeah, it didn't look like we would be putting as much money, that we, as, though we would be needing all that much money because of the timing of the bonds that we were going to be writing and things like that. Is there, and I was a little surprised to see this list and not see any reductions from those funds included. What what happened there?
Which funds, I'm sorry?
Well, the Debt Service Fund, uh, there was some discussion last time around about how some of the money from, that was, uh, being, you know, a a payment into the, an extra payment into the Debt Service Fund, might not all be needed this year.
It was the Debt Service Fund of two forty-nine, seven, um, two hundred forty-nine thousand seven seventy-six, and the capital improvement, um, increase of three hundred ninety-nine thousand five hundred and eighteen. And we agreed, I think, maybe not, but to leave transit as is.
I think the the story we got last time around was that, uh, basically, the most that might be cut from transit would be eighty thousand. Whether we wanted to cut from transit is another issue, but that although there is that, that, that that payment to that fund would have to be looked at differently from the 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 possible demands on the other payments to those funds. But I just seemed to me that, I I had the sense at the meeting we had in this space a couple of weeks ago, I had the sense that there was some willingness on the part of the staff to think that perhaps some of those funds, some of those transfers might be reduced. And if that's the case, then that would enable us to either, you know, put money in, more money into the Council Strategic Initiatives, or to put more money to the schools.
Yeah, so the decision point here was reduce any of the above transfers on this sheet, that's what he's asking. So I guess you all can think about that, but I think by doing it this way and going through the proposed reduction cuts, we've eliminated that conversation, and that's apparently what they would prefer.
I guess I'm asking why.
Based on what's presented, I, listen, I got a lot of questions that I can't.
Well, more so is to make sure that we keep level funding in terms of what we're trying to do, as we talked about before. You know, you can only kick the can down the road so long, and if we couldn't, if we do that, then the impact later on, moving forward, and you know, we're dealing with this issue now with the coronavirus. I mean, you know, what will be the impact in the future, I mean, in the future year? So I want to, just want to make sure, uh, that we are funding things and keeping it level, instead of, you know, trying to make those reductions in those areas and, you know, who knows how long this may last in terms of our, uh, ability to generate revenues to be able to pay it in the future.
And I get that, oh, go ahead.
No, I'm just saying, because you know, when it comes to debt, you know, before anything else, even operations, you got to pay for your debt.
I know, but when you, I would have liked to see, um, proposed reductions that didn't, well, capital improvement program, um, it seems to me that that is over people, right? Based on some of these, and so I, that just seems too one-sided, in my opinion. Um, but that chart is still in the former, you know, um, the packet we had last time, and so that's a discussion point, I guess we can go back to if there is a desire there. Um, but right now, you, what is the agreement with this three hundred and sixty-one thousand? Is it all of it, a portion of it, anything that's potentially needed, we'll leave it open, what is?
Well, and what's, um, does this three hundred and sixty-one thousand include the money in the equity fund, or is that, okay, so that's all wrapped up in one?
Yes, that, yes, that's correct.
And there's no equity fund, because there's been the attempt to merge it into one thing, which it's not, um.
I thought it was always under strategic initiatives.
With a line item.
Yeah, the the line items have always been under strategic initiatives, we are, we do have, um, we provided at the, I believe it was the February work session, the breakout of what the equity dollars were spent on, and then there was the additional three hundred thousand that was added. So we're tracking that se- that separately, um, and so that would, um, be something that, it's all under the, that one account, it can be used at council's discretion for an equity item or some some other item as it, as as the need arises. But we are tracking that so that you can see exactly what has been specifically called out as equity, and then obviously, once we go over the, um, sixty thousand dollars that was purely strategic initiatives, then anything above that would have to come out of the equity fund as well. So that would be, but all that would be at council's discretion and go before council before any of those, um, funds were expensed.
I think we need the relative flexibility of the equi- of the strategic initiative fund to be left where it's at.
I mean, I would be inclined to, uh, agree with that and leave it where it's at, I mean, the only situation I could think of is potentially if if there is a a budget line item related to equity that could only be funded through this, if we reach that kind of decision point. Um, but otherwise, I'm inclined to leave it there, I mean, to the question, to the transfer to the Debt Service Payment, um, you know, what, the sense of the conversation I got is that, again, it might, you know, if we reduce it, it could make this budget cycle a little easier. But it's only going to increase what we'd have to pay eventually. Um, I mean, I would be open to reducing it if it is accompanied by reducing something in the CIP. And again, I think another factor in all of it is just that the number of projects funded in the CIP budget are going to ra- are still rationing up each year, and we haven't yet hit, you know, the most we're going to spend from it.
Yeah, we do have a discussion on the twenty-six pertaining to the capital side.
So it looks like right now, with what we've agreed upon, it's around eight hundred and fifty thousand.
Eight hundred twenty-six thousand, three hundred and twenty-eight dollars.
And I would also like to caution that the four hundred thousand for the, that being deferred from FLEES is spent cautiously, knowing that this is really more of a one-time thing.
Okay.
Um, we just have to be careful with that.
All right.
So if we're doing that, you need to know where we want to put the money.
Yeah, that goes, kind of goes back to to this slide, and, um, interesting, part of the, uh, presentation, in the appendix, I do have the backup slides from last week for each of these decision points, if we need to go to any of them for for the discussion, I'm happy to do that. Or if you just want to talk about them as we.
So, let's start from the bottom, since it's easier. Um, um, then departmental new request, um.
I'll just share, for me, like, they're, right now, they're listed in the operation, I consider them a priority right now, just the way that they're listed.
Well, I know, but we basically need to know if we're funding anything else other than schools, right?
Right.
We might as well eliminate it. Um, so departmental new request is eight million, and schools is listed as number one, where are we with that?
Regarding our own staff, I would prioritize the COLA over this, so that's, I don't, I don't, I don't see us, I don't see myself supporting specifically department new requests, I'd rather have that go to a COLA if anything.
And, yeah, so, and I am willing to take it off, but I think that funding, um, it would have just been nice to know how the requests ma- match up in terms of, um, equity, how it was impacting the departments, the work that they were doing. And, um, you know, so those are things that I would have needed to know, but, okay. What are, Sina, Council McGill?
I, I don't even know where this is.
It's the department, it's the council decis- decision point sheet, and we're just talk, huh?
Let her know it's slide, we're we're back on slide three.
Slide three.
I forgot she can't see it.
Oh.
So we're just at the bottom of just trying to figure out where we are.
So I'm at, there's council decision points, proposed reductions.
No.
Yeah, slide three is the council decision points.
Right before. Yeah, so, yeah.
Okay, okay, thank you.
So the last one, the departmental new request, that came in at eight million, are we?
Do we know what those were?
We had.
We had a list given to us.
Oh, that's right.
Yeah, I'm just not in a position to say one thing over another, like.
But I just think in the future, it would have been nice to know, like, again, if we're not cutting or increasing, just what that looks like in comparison to other increase. Um, and have we looked at, you know, like, if our human services o- office proposed something related to equity, did we look at whether, how that would work, what the cost was, and where that fit in on? If we are increasing things like in the school requests based on equity, that's what I'm asking.
I hear you.
Like, in the future, I just would like to know that. Um, all right, so we're taking it off? All right, eliminate it, right? All right, CHAP program adjustments, three hundred eighty-nine thousand five hundred and one dollars.
Do you want me to go to the next slide and show the changes, or do you just want to talk about it?
Yeah, I think everybody, but you can put it up.
I think it'd be, I I find it useful, we'll just be refreshed on the changes, because I can't remember what they are.
You need to hear me do it this one, sorry. There we go.
Todd.
Yeah, there's questions, I just got up here. Yeah, so that basically it creates another tier, um, and then runs the, um, the top income bracket to sixty thousand, and then it's just more generous at each category.
And does the, does the CHAP program eligibility include the, uh, value of your house, and that being a cutoff point as well?
Yes, it is.
And what's that cutoff point?
Three hundred seventy-five thousand.
And that's set by state regulation?
Correct, by the the HDA home loan program, and it's, it's at the top where it can be right now.
And we don't have any, um, not that that's the question for tonight, but I just want to know, I think I've asked this before, any authority to change that, will we need to petition?
Not as far as I know, not without a, um.
General Assembly?
Right, yeah, we'd need a charter amendment, I believe.
Okay.
Because, yeah, I mean, obviously, I think we discussed this last time, but the numbers of people eligible to receive it keep going down, because the assessed values have just gone up so much.
I I think, uh, in discussing it with the mayor, maybe eighteen, was that the number we said, we lost about eighteen homes that went with the reassessment, went above the threshold? You know, I was actually surprised that it didn't go up this year, um, that the VHDA parameter didn't go up, so I thought it was going to go up, maybe it'll go up next year.
Do you have any sense, uh, supposing we were to say, okay, Mr. Commissioner, supposing we wanted to increase this program by two hundred thousand dollars, not four hundred thousand dollars, what that might look like?
There, one of the mayor's proposals, um, that, I mean, we haven't really discussed as much, um, it, I mean, again, it it goes from four tiers to five tiers, it maxes out. It, the the max remains at fifty-five thousand, um, but it bumps the, uh, the values at each level. Um, I mean, I could show you on paper, but.
I guess what I'm, what I'm getting at is this, this, this particular four hundred thousand dollar set of changes.
Mm-hmm.
Is actually about three separate changes wrapped into it, into the whole thing.
Yeah, at least.
You could make it, uh, some different choices there, if you were told, let's say, okay, we we have an extra, we want to put an extra two hundred thousand dollars toward this, not an extra four hundred thousand dollars, now go tweak the numbers. And I'm not asking you to do it right now while you're standing at a microphone, but the point is, I I assume that that's something that, given time enough in front of a computer.
I could come up with, yeah, I'd probably come up with her second scenario, honestly.
Uh-huh, what's that second scenario again?
It's, it's like I said, the the top tier is fifty-five thousand dollars, there are five tiers, um, the benefit amounts are, at the lowest tier, full relief, the next tier is two thousand dollars, one thousand dollars, seven fifty-five hundred. It just, it doesn't go as high.
From the fifty-five thousand to sixty thousand, and so we would keep it at the fifty-five thousand.
And adjust everything else accordingly, yeah.
But I actually think the benefit actually might be more on the side of increasing the income amount, to capture that additional group of folks who have qualified out because of income rising.
I mean, those are the ones that drop out, I mean, those are the ones that we see, you know, going from one year.
Yeah.
Having the benefit to the following year not having the benefit, so, yeah, I mean, they they feel it the worst.
Attempting to get to, but again, you know, if you are looking for reductions, then.
But I'm just saying, like, there is still another matrix about this, where you keep the grant amounts the same, but raise the income level.
Well, I mean, we could, yeah, um, the the, the numbers I was asked to run actually increases the the benefits as well, and that gets us to two hundred thousand dollars that Lloyd was talking about.
So, um, there's support, or no, I guess the first thing, and then if you all would let us work on what to presenting a new package, is what I'm asking.
Well, uh, uh, let me, let me be real clear about where I think we're coming down to, from what I'm seeing here, is that as we're looking at these last few choices, we've got, uh, at most, about a hundred and, about eight hundred and forty thou- eight twenty, whatever it is, on the table. And so if we're looking at doing anything additional for the schools, it's capped out at that eight twenty or whatever. And it's eight twenty minus whatever we do for CHAP, minus whatever we do for our own employees' COLA. And so, I, I, I'll just, to sort of jump, jump ahead a little bit, my feeling on it is if we reduce this to two hundred thousand dollars and then give the extra, what amounts to six hundred and twenty thousand dollars to the schools, then that, that gets us to zero. And if, if, if that's, you know, it doesn't fund any additional other than two percent, but it also has, I think, as I said last time, built into the, into it the notion that maybe two percent is what citywide ought to be the goal anyway, and if the schools have to make some accommodations to their own salary structure, you know, they can if they want to, they don't have to if they don't want to, they can find the money in other, in other places.
So that's what I'm asking, so.
I'm definitely for the CHAP program in some form going forward and increasing.
And I think when we've increased assessments as much as we have this year, I think it ought to be something that we, I don't know, we don't necessarily assume it, but we ought to think that pretty, pretty heavily that that's some, I mean, a continuing accommodation that ought to get made.
So I have, so is there the agreement to what Counselor Snook said to decrease it to the two hundred thousand?
Do you want me to bring you some proposals at around that price point?
Yeah, I would like to, that's what I'm gonna ask, if we could work together and bring you all.
I think it's important for us to give you a number to work with, so, I'm, I agree with that.
Yeah, that's. Okay.
I mean, I would.
Yeah, I'd like to see what it looks like at two hundred thousand.
I, I'd agree two hundred thousand minimum, but potentially open to more.
Yeah.
Understanding also that, you know, there's a, that, you know, it's either gonna go with the, the schools or COLA, as well as I think another decision point that may be already, already off limits that we haven't discussed is the funding in the Vibrant Communities Fund, whether, you know, I know there's things that are unfunded that are big priorities, whether that comes purely from cutting other things in the Vibrant Community Funds or that revenue comes from here or somewhere else. That's another conversation we'll get to tonight, but I think that could potentially be another decision point related to this, this money.
I think it's final, so it's all final.
Okay, so the agreement, well, Sina, your thoughts on capping it at two?
I mean, I'd like to see what it looks like at two. I'd also like to have maneuverability if, you know, if it means closer to two fifty, that actually gets some, some traction. I guess I'd like to see it around two.
Okay, so we have two. And then if we can just work on that.
I'll work up some proposals.
And then the other question that I have is about the funding that you all may have in April that should have been built into the budget for this, that you all know what that amount is. If that amount is this three eighty-nine, does council support funding it at this level? 'Cause what was that, well, we went through this the last time. So there was additional funding that was allocated last year because we thought that it potentially would cost more, so.
Ryan could probably speak to that better than I could. I, yeah, we sort of overshot the mark last year when we were revising this the first time. So then theoretically, there's gonna be some money left over.
Yeah, and, and again.
We'll see.
The one issue was when we redid the budget last year, we really reduced the real estate tax relief to, to the elderly and the disabled, thinking that some of the people would migrate from that program to the CHAP program. But what Mr. Divers had seen in, in the experience was that there, but when we readjusted the, the lev- the criteria to be even, there wasn't as much migration, so we didn't have to go up as much there, but we really had undershot our budget on the real estate tax relief side, so some of this extra that we could say, oh, well, we know we have a lot of extra here, is being eaten up by what we underbudgeted on the tax relief side, so it's kind of that fluctuation where we're still.
Yeah, we don't know where it's all gonna shake out. I mean, I expect there's gonna be a surplus here, but I don't know what it's gonna end up with. We're still taking applications.
When do, when do the tax relief numbers come in? Is, will that not be till June when we know those final numbers?
Uh, well, Jason said, what you said, we'll have April.
Yeah. First week of April, so potentially we would know if we did have the April seventh work session, we could potentially know something around that time. So that would be, so there would be the potential for that at that, at that point, but prior to that, I don't think we would have, it would just be our best, best guess at that point.
Yeah, I wouldn't wanna hang my hat on it right now.
Yeah. That was just a second part question to council, like if then, would, do you all support this amount?
I have a side clarifying question.
Okay.
On the CHAP program, it's, so if I have a house and I'm paying a hundred and, sixteen hundred dollars a year for my real estate taxes and I make thirty-two thousand dollars, does that mean I get a two thousand dollar check?
I, I mean, under the, I guess, under the new proposal that we're talking about, currently you'd get a thousand dollars back. It would be applied first to your, your second half bill and then if there was anything left from the thousand dollars, you'd get a check.
Well, okay, so, wait, wasn't there a two thousand dollar? A two thousand dollar?
Tier?
What I'm asking is, is at some point, could I get more back than my tax, what my tax payment was?
No, we don't, we don't, yeah, no, we've.
Okay. That's, that's a double checking.
Yep.
And we talked about last year not doing the check, but that was easy.
Just, just the way the, we need to take the applications during the course of the year, so that we don't go across fiscal years. We need to do it this way.
Okay.
Okay.
Well, why, why can't we just, like, credit it to the account?
Yeah, I tried that.
It gets really messy.
It just seems like it would save us money not writing the checks and sending them out if we just credit it to the account.
I mean, it would maybe save a little postage, but it gets really messy when you're trying to anticipate a credit to a, an account that we don't even know what the assessment's gonna be. I, it's just, it would get really messy.
But we, okay, that was the same question I had, I had again.
We discussed that last year.
Yeah. But the assessments are not gonna go down, more likely than not, right?
Probably not, but people leave.
I know, I know, Todd, I remember. Okay. Employee COLA from two to three percent?
Like, at, at this point with what we've reduced this number by, I'm not, I'm getting really uncomfortable with the schools.
And staff wanted to keep it at two percent. We looked at some scenarios where we would give some people two percent, some people three. I asked them to just look at that. They are not comfortable with splitting up, you know, the amounts, giving some people more than others until the compensation setting, so that's where we, that's where that conversation went. So we're staying at two?
I think so.
And I'll just say again, for me is just, you know, making sure that we're, that we're giving increases to other, that we make sure that we are also being considerate of the city staff too. Alright, cities, city schools, request one point eight.
I think we're left with about six hundred and twenty thousand dollars, give or take a little bit.
Roughly six hundred and, depending on the, the figures that we come out, roughly six hundred and twenty-six thousand at this point, six hundred and twenty-seven thousand.
So I have a, two, two questions. Of the, whether it's possible to reduce this capital improvement fund, so if you all can talk about that a little bit more. And then the, what, no, did I just say two different things?
The capital improvement fund, the CIP transfer.
The CIP transfer. And the parking enterprise fund, both of those.
So the parking enterprise fund, when you say reduce it, do you, do you mean?
Or the increase of transfer, the parking fund, the general fund, is that what you're trying to, increase in that, yeah.
Yes. Yes. And what was the, did you all already say that? 'Cause I don't.
The fund balance in the parking fund right now?
One point seven is what you said.
Is that one point, is that one point six after?
The hundred thousand.
Right.
So one point seven is where we finish nineteen. There is, it was projected to move to just slightly over two in, at the end of this current year, which is twenty. And so the, and then it was projected to go to four in twenty-one, so, you know, however you adjust it and then depending on what the parking revenues look like, you know, that's with the virus now, that's a big unknown at this point, but it's up to you. I mean, did you have a number in mind or?
But we were, I think when you and I talked about it also though, that there, we, those dollars could be applied to parking-related major capital expenditures in the future and then freeing up those dollars that were allocated in that line and for other things, which we'll get to in our capital program. I just, I'm just struggling, 'cause there's a lot of capital stuff that we're not doing.
And that was sort of the, the idea behind weaning the general fund off of the parking revenue so that it's supporting its own expenses.
Even when we're building larger structures.
We hear the deep sigh, Sina.
Is that for us or is something you're going through or something?
What?
What's happening?
Wait, I'm sorry, I missed that, I heard my name.
Were you exhaling because of the conversation?
No, 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 no. That, that was the attempt to breathe.
Okay.
Oh, jeez.
Alright, that's important.
That was all.
Alright, so.
Well, I mean, I'm, I'm open to more from the parking fund and again, I think, for me, I feel like it makes the most sense for us if we reduce transfers either to debt service or CIP to reduce CIP expenditures. And again, when it comes to parking, both the ten million dollar parking structure in the CIP and the parking fund, you know, I just, we, we don't have any data about what our actual parking need is and I worry in terms of constructing new parking, that again, we're not making data-driven decisions. The one study we have outdated from twenty fifteen did not recommend building new spaces, just parking management changes and parking meters. So, again, it raises the question of the, the importance of the money in the parking fund as well as that ten million dollar expenditure in the CIP. Again, when we're thinking about, you know, making tough budget decisions.
Well, I believe that we're gonna, during the CIP discussion, that we'll hear from the parking manager to get a more current kind of view on where we are relative to parking overall. I know that count, the previous council got one towards the end of the year that I found very helpful to hear, so.
Okay, so.
So can I clarify one more question with you? When you said increase the parking transfer back to the general fund, did you have a dollar amount in mind?
No, I didn't. That was just one of the things that we had asked. I don't know what it's, I mean, I hear what Chris is saying, so I can't say whether.
I'm just wondering, are you looking for more dollars to do something else?
Well, we're now having the conversation about schools and where we're at with it, so.
Okay.
I don't know. So I guess, okay. Council, is there a desire to have them pull more funds from the parking enterprise fund?
But is that sus- is there sustaining? I mean, I'm just trying to understand, like, what we're setting ourselves up for.
Chris, do you wanna speak to that?
Well, he said no.
What's the question?
I'm talking like, we're talking about pulling funds that aren't necessarily sustaining necessarily. These are, we're talking about capital things. I'm just trying to understand, are we gonna be putting, allocating something for an operational purpose that really necessarily isn't something we can rely upon, or also what you explained, rest last time, was that this is intended for this purpose and that we should be continuing it to invest in that purpose?
Yeah, I mean, to, to continue to, to take more from it is backtracking on the original intent. Understand you're in a difficult situation. I have three kids in the city schools, so I would like to see the city schools funded well. But, you know, it's just delaying setting it up officially and having enough money there so that you don't have to come and ask the CIP or the operating budget in the future to fund parking. The whole purpose behind the fund is to allow parking to pay for parking, so the general fund and people that don't engage in parking aren't paying for it, so you separate that. It's baby steps to get there and we're about halfway through. We can easily absorb the, the, the level funding or the level transfer that was described earlier. We could probably absorb a little bit more, but it is taking a baby step backwards.
So do you have a number for a little bit more or no?
Dr. Atkins wants to give me one, but, no.
No, okay. So, and ideally, the, what was proposed is what you would recommend?
The level funding, yeah, we can absorb that just fine.
And when we go to look at our capital projects related to parking, this is a source that we could be applying directly to that, to help reduce the capital investments that we're asking from the general CIP.
In theory, yes.
But we're not doing that yet.
Right.
There's a ten million dollar over two years to fu- to fund a facility in the CIP currently.
And that was back to the conversation we had last time, unless we were gonna change course on some of those major projects, which there's a, you know, to explore, then we would need to make that decision too.
It's a pretty big discussion.
I know, not right now, but I'm just staying. See Chris' face? Okay, so next, thank you, Chris. General fund transfer to debt service fund, increase of two hundred forty-nine thousand, seven hundred. Any willingness there?
So let me just say, clarify one thing on that. The forty-nine thousand and the change is the projected difference in the meals tax growth and that's required by our policy for that one percent, so really from the general fund in terms of reallocation, it's two hundred thousand.
I mean, it's, it's only gonna increase what we have to pay at a later date. To me, again, I think it just makes a lot more sense if we cut that money, if we also have corresponding cut in what's in our CIP budget.
Which we wouldn't be able to make until we had that.
Right.
Yeah, I'm with Michael on that. I'm really hesitant to reduce that.
'Cause it just means next budget cycle, it's gonna be the same question.
I agree on the debt service piece, yeah.
Alright, general fund transfer to the capital improvement program. I mean, can we have this conversation without having the capital improvement work session?
No.
I don't wanna step on Chris' toes, 'cause she's the CIP guru, but I would say that that's the, the cash transfer to the CIP, so we would have to look at reducing projects by an equivalent amount of what, whatever we reduce in that, that transfer or somewhere in that, in that, so.
I mean, I, again, it's all about priorities and, you know, trade-offs and so I agree with you. I think you need to have lists and be able to talk legitimately about what projects you're talking about versus what that trade-off is.
So for right now, we can agree on committing these things, these amounts for now, and knowing that there might be more dollars that we could free up once we have those other conversations, but.
There's only one.
Huh?
The only one that we've agreed on.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, I'm looking back at these decision.
Capital improvement, so that three ninety-nine may be up for discussion if we're willing to do it during the work session, is what. I'm not, why is everybody, I'm just trying to move.
I'm nodding in agreement with what you're saying, yes.
And I would, and I'm also open to looking at the, the, the amount of money coming from the, the parking transfer. I don't know if anyone else is in agreement, but.
Part of me feels like both those categories fall in the CIP world as a, as a universe and so I, I think we just need to talk about those when we get to that point, so we can really understand what we're giving up there.
So right now, we're working with what amount?
So it looks like six twenty-seven?
Six twenty-six, three twen- twenty-six.
To the school.
Tell me again.
Two hundred to chat.
Six hundred, twenty-six thousand, three hundred and twenty-six dollars is what we have remaining from that original list. We do two hundred towards the CHAP. Six hundred, twenty-six thousand, three hundred and twenty-six dollars is what we have, um, remaining from that original list, we do two hundred towards the chat program.
All right, so, Doctor Atkins, as of right now, that's where we are. Six hundred twenty-six thousand, three hundred and twenty-six dollars. All right, all right, next.
Okay.
That wa, that wasn't on the list of considerations.
Now, we're gonna go through the, um, outside agencies portion of the work session, and, um, we're gonna start, um, with the contractual.
Have a good evening.
With the contractual agencies, and I'll let, uh, Chrissy, um, take the lead on these particular ones.
This is quick, fast, and easy, I hope. So, with the contractual agencies, again, most of these, uh, the budgets are determined by a formula or an agreement. We also, um, pretty much, uh, mirror what the county does, so there's consistency there. Some of the, most of them did not really change, um, both of the jails did see some savings, and that is largely due to our percent of, um, inmate populations continued to decrease, and so therefore, we're seeing some saving, while other localities are increasing, and so we're able to realize some savings there. The emergency communication center, at the time, we had the, um, proposed budget, they were looking at an increase related to some of their software that, since they have gotten a revised number, and so that is now, um, that ask has pretty much come down close, not much higher than last year, and that was, that savings we've already used in your reduction scenario. John is, um, an ask that is a slight increase, and again, we're consistent with the county in, um, what we've put in the proposed budget. We, they had some increases in healthcare and workers' comp, um, they also had some, um, staff and driver increases, and mu, um, some, most of that was driven by, um, uh, market adjustment, because, uh, the CAT drivers on the city side did receive the four percent increase last year, and so, this is to get them, um, in step with that. And then there were just some general operations, services, supplies increases, um, that make up the differences there. Did you have a question?
Yeah, I just have a statement, um, about that, and we, I made this before when we looked at this last year, because, or the year before, whichever year it was, but we were able to look at what our drivers were earning with their, you know, that was the year that they just committed to pay increases for their drivers, and hadn't had the discussion, but just wanted the additional funding. And I'm still confused about how that's like apples to apples, so if our drivers get an increase every time, that is just automatic, I just still have questions about that.
So, I don't think it's automatic, um, they prepare their budget, and it was in their request. Again, this was just between the city and the county, there was some desire to make up some of that difference, and that's not all of the difference, um, because they, the most of the increase is related to their healthcare and their workers' comp increase, but to answer your question, I don't, Garland, I don't know if you have any more information, I don't know exactly how that works, and I know you're new to the process as well, but we could follow up and find out for you.
We have representative from John here.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Brad, Brad's hiding in the back.
Would you like to come?
Not sure what the question is.
Come on up for day two, on the city side this time.
Was just the, um, just talking about how it's determined, the needs, and how we factor that in, when we're factoring in the increases, and how, um, just your opinion, which you've shared before, but on the equivalency of the drivers.
Yeah, the, uh, assessment of any kind of wage increase for John versus CAT are done independently, uh, there is no coordination or collaboration there. So, John looks at, you know, any kind of market demands, or, um, yeah, just essentially the market, and what it needs to do to compensate the drivers. And, uh, in this case, that was that four percent, uh, as far as what the city CAT looks at, I'm not quite sure about that, either the city or Garland can speak to that.
So, your drivers will receive, uh, four percent raise this year?
Yeah, last year was two percent, and, um, so, we were just trying to keep up with the market in the area.
And the drivers?
I just, but you brought your drivers up at some budgets, like, since I've been here.
Two years ago.
To.
No, the city only funded half of that request at that time, uh, so we only brought them up halfway to close that gap, so we've never really fully closed the gap between the John drivers and CAT drivers. Right now, my, my starting drivers make fourteen twenty-nine an hour, this proposal will bring up.
But it was sixteen in our budget, the year it was presented, right?
I think there was a bit of miss, um, term, misuse of, uh, or miscommunication of terminology, we look at, starting, I was looking at the median, meaning what would be the typical driver who's been there for a while making, uh, so, it was not at the time apples to apples, it was, uh, just different ways of the city looking at how it looks at its wage ranges, and how John was doing that, um, but we hire at that fourteen twenty-nine at this time, and that, uh, median, I'd have to go back and look and see what that is right now, but that's more or less that number that you were thinking of at that time. Not that you were thinking of it, that you're thinking of what was discussed at that time.
Okay, and I did think your drivers were at least at the fifteen, um.
Um, it goes back to the median, there's a portion that, that are, um, it's, uh, something I'd have to pull together to figure out exactly who's in what range of, of all that.
But you do have drivers that are making less than fifteen, you're saying?
Mm-hmm, yes.
And is, is it correct that drivers don't receive full-time benefits as well, or is that incorrect?
No, ours do, our full-time drivers receive full-time benefits.
Do you only have full-time drivers?
Uh, we've got about, out of the hundred, I think there are about fifteen of them that are part-time by choice, they just have other jobs, and so they drive for us on the weekends or evenings or something. We don't create, uh, part-time positions and then try to fill them, we, more or less, if someone applies, they say, well, you know, I know you got a full-time position, but I'm, I want to drive for John on a part-time basis, then we look at, maybe they could fill a niche that we have. And they do not receive benefits.
Thank you. Did you have any? No. Um, my only other, um, comment is that this public defenders office, um, in comparison to the, um, prosecutor salary, it's much lower for the, um, for Liz and the other attorneys, and so, I just think, especially with the information that we got from the DMC report, and we see that it has been consistent, the supplement to that office need to be much greater, um, if we are going to support the, and I understand this year is, may not be, but if we're gonna support the work that needs to be done with the DMC report, this is definitely one area that we need to figure out, um, how to increase. Counselor Snook, do you have any comment?
One, one comment or one question I had, there was a bill in the general assembly this year that would require that if we were giving, uh, any kind of additional funds to the Commonwealth Attorney's Office to increase the pay for their assistance, that that would also, uh, carry over to the public, the, the same increase would have to be given to public defenders. Do we know whether that bill went anywhere? Do you know, Mr. Blair?
Uh, good evening, Counselor Snook, Mayor Walker, counselors, um, concerning your question, there was a bill in the state that, um, was going to, in effect, have parity. That bill did not pass, to my knowledge, but the city has an independent memorandum of understanding with the public defenders office that does provide supplements based on the Commonwealth Attorney's Office salaries, so, I imagine that if there is an increase in the salaries provided to the Commonwealth Attorney, there would be a corresponding increase to that supplement we provide to the public defenders office.
That's in fact exactly what we do, so at some point, when we started the, uh, contribution to the public defender, or the supplement to their office, there was an amount established, and then every year since then, that amount is increased by whatever the percent of COLA that we offer to the city employees, so this assumes a two percent increase.
Yeah, but, hold on, I have something. Handy dandy sheets, um, so, right now, our prosecutor salary is a hundred and sixty thousand dollars, um, and, um, our public defender, um, lead salary is a hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars. Next in line is a hundred and twelve thousand dollars, the public defender salary is eighty-eight thousand, seven hundred and eleven dollars. And you can go ahead down where the next one is ninety-nine, I'm not gonna read this whole list, and then, and they have less, you know, support staff, I think, I don't have all my numbers, but I think they have sixteen hundred cases, um, that eight attorneys are trying to work from, and, um, just what that means overall, if we're gonna look at that part of the system, and how, um, adequate indigent defense is funded, so while they may receive the COLAs, they haven't been receiving, um, you know, major differences if they have, um, differences between, you know, you know, in some cases up to forty-five percent.
I think that's right, I mean, I, I think it is based on a twenty-fourteen, was that, I think that's the year of the memorandum, that was when the parity, or the supplements were enacted via MOU, but, um, you know, in terms of the actual one-to-one per position, I don't think that they are funded in the same way as the Commonwealth Attorney, as to a one-to-one dollar ratio.
And they do very different work, right, and so, I'm just bringing this conversation up just for us to start thinking about when, um, Kaki brings back the list of suggestions on what can help fix the system, if our prosecutor office is outpacing in that amount, and the public defenders office is underfunded and things, that is just one area that we would definitely have to look at, and I've started looking at it, and I hadn't looked at it before this report, and, but I think it's important. I don't know if that was on your list, and you don't have to speak to her right now, but I just.
It is now.
I, I should say, the biggest difference between the two offices, completely aside from the pay to the attorneys, is that the public defenders office has, at one, and to a certain extent, two investigators, whereas the Commonwealth Attorney's got a hundred and fifty of them.
Yeah, I mean, the support staff was a major factor, but we can't just look at, um, but eight attorneys handling sixteen hundred cases, what kind of defense are the clients getting? And you know, uh, not you know, but you know.
I know.
Yes.
I hear you. I know what you're saying.
Yeah, okay, so just an area, all right.
And then, real quick, the library are basically just operational increases, again, that's a, um, multi-jurisdictional, that's just our share. The health department, again, is just a formula that's driven by, um, population, pretty much, and unless you had any other questions on any of the others, most of them are basically flat.
And all of these are driven by, like, agreements? I do have a. Oh, go ahead.
Uh, what is the Virginia Cooperative Extension Service?
Um, it, it is, Chris, do you want to speak to that, Chris Engel, are you familiar with that? Are you, John?
I mean, Virginia Tech does a, Virginia Tech and Virginia State, uh, have the Cooperative Extension Service, not aware of everything, I do know that they do four-H programs, that's one of their functions within the city.
And that program is what's driving a little bit of this increase, it moved a part-time person to full-time employee. I can give you a summary.
I'm just curious what's, what it is.
I'll give that summary to you.
And also, what, how does the Charlottesville Center for Contemporary Art express itself in Charlottesville?
Yeah, I, I, um, I can find that out for you as well.
Thanks.
Well, if there's no other questions on the contractual agencies, um, we'll go ahead and move into.
Yeah, just my one point I've made for the years, just the, like, childcare scholarships, if we are funding that in several ways, just being able to, you know, streamline that and eliminate it, eliminate the administrative fees from multiple places, that that type of money is going, if that's in increases that have been requested, is something that I've suggested. And then, again, look at the amount of money that we provide to Region Ten, and, again, the support to just make sure that the services that clients are receiving is, uh, helping them, um, and just whatever conversations need to be had to make sure that is the case.
Okay, well, if there's no other questions, or, um, from council on this, we're gonna go ahead and move into the, um, Vibrant Community Fund process, um, and I, we have Kaki here, who is going to help us, uh, walk through some of the process changes, and, and kind of the ongoing efforts, future decision points, next steps that we're working on in this process, and then we'll go, um, and start walking through, um, the agencies after that. But I'll, I'll kick, turn it over to Kaki for a little bit.
Um, so, just a reminder, we're in the sort of second year of a likely three-plus-year, um, change process around the Vibrant Community Fund, uh, with the first year actually implementing changes, we suspended operations last year, so everyone was held harmless last year, while we spent some time trying to figure out how to make some changes. And, uh, there were changes that were implemented this year, including, uh, five, uh, broad, uh, funding priority areas that you all identified, education, youth, jobs, wages, community, public safety, affordable housing and health, four of which were also adopted by the University of Virginia, um, and we identified three different funding streams, um, one was, uh, grants over twenty-five thousand dollars that would match one of these, uh, five priority areas, grants under twenty-five thousand dollars that would meet a str, a city's strategic goal, and, uh, grants under ten thousand dollars that would be for capacity building, and we identified some of the, uh, activities that we would be interested in uh, funding under capacity building, that was fairly broad, uh, agencies could submit requests, uh, for capacity building, activities that they thought of that we hadn't, we did give a pretty strong priority for those, uh, for capacity building, uh, activities that were related to equity. Uh, we changed the composition of the review team fairly significantly to reflect more lived experience with poverty and nonprofit consumers, and we also paid for their participation. Uh, we did some training around power dynamics and conflicts of interest, uh, which is one of the pieces of feedback we had received from, uh, nonprofits from years before. Um, we expanded the resources available for technical assistance, though notably, nobody took advantage of those expanded resources, but we did have lots of ways in which people could receive technical assistance. Um, and we, uh, ranked our applications, and this is pretty significant change, we ranked the applications along, uh, the more traditional, um, path that we have in the past, but also along importance, and so, was the intervention uh, critical, I, I think it was essential, important.
Essential, important, helpful, or no direct?
Helpful or no direct connection to the actual, uh, goal that it had identified it was trying to seek, and so this was pretty critical, it gave us two ways of thinking about it. Some of the feedback that we've received from nonprofits in years past is that the, uh, process has really, um, uh, in unfairly advantaged, uh, people with sophisticated grant writing experience, um, and, uh, really disadvantaged sort of the scrappier nonprofits that will might be pulling together a nonprofit application or a funding application, we wanted to make sure that we were reviewing both the spirit of the intervention, and also the way that it was presented to us. Uh, one of the things that I think is important to note is that, that, that while we implemented some pretty significant changes for this year, there's lots of questions to come around this evolving change process, and some questions got sort of more amplified as we've gone through this sort of change process, and you all are looking at some of the results around that, um, so we have a measurements and solutions group that has, uh, begun its work, and will be providing recommendations to city council this summer that will inform what happens next, um, and we have an arts and. Um, and we have an Arts and Culture Review that will, um, also provide recommendations to City Council during the work session, I think is immediately scheduled for early August. Um, and then, uh, we have additional decision points and recommendations. I think one of the things that has come up in conversation repeatedly, both, um, with the small group, uh, that Mayor Walker convened to launch some of these changes and other groups, is how and if the city should assess the agency's need for city funding. Um, historically, funding has been provided to agencies that do a good job providing the service and not necessarily evaluating whether the agency actually needs the ten thousand dollars that it's asking the city, and how we would define that need. And so it has come up in this process repeatedly, and so it will be one of the questions we look to council to start to, to debate in, uh, midsummer. Um, and in addition, perhaps maybe the City Council will consider getting more specific about funding limits per application. We'll see some of the results of not having any funding limits, um, in terms of what our requests were this year. Um, maybe funding, uh, distributing the available funding across the priority areas so that the priorities themselves get prioritized, or they don't get prioritized and there's an equal amount of money in each pool. And then finally, whether there's an, uh, the council will, um, identify what the overall amount available for funds is prior to us going into the application process. Because we, we receive applications, we rank them and evaluate them, and then the, um, then, then we identify how much money is available and back into what the city manager's budget ends up recommending. And, and that may be the wrong way to approach it, and so it's conversations for the future. For this year, we received sixty-four, uh, program, uh, requests in the five pr- uh, priority areas, which was about three point two six million dollars, I think. And we received sixteen requests for capacity building grants, a total of a hundred and fifty-one thousand, one hundred and eighty-three dollars. And I believe, uh, Ryan's gonna walk us through some of the grids.
Yeah, and so, um, just, um, as a refresher, when we met in January, you asked us to come with a few... You asked us to come with a few, uh...
That was loud, in large concern.
...scenarios to, uh, to, for recommendations on funding and, and things of that nature. Um, and so we had, we brought to you in February, um, two different potential funding scenarios based on, as Kaki said, the two ways that the evaluation, the, um, applications were evaluated, whether through the importance, essential, important, helpful, and then the traditional application score. At that time...
What is going on? Turning at the ball?
Okay. Oh, yeah. So, um... Okay, back to, back to my train of thought, uh, sorry. So, at that time, um, the, we showed you the, the, the two potential scenarios, and one had, um, the one that was ch- recommended by council was to, on the essential exemplary, fund them with a, as much of a percentage as possible with some lesser amounts, and the essential solid and the exemplary important categories, so...
Could I just interject just for a second? And this was blind, so we did not know what they were recommending. It was hard for most of us to make that decision, I think maybe all of us. Because we had no idea what the funding recommendations from this group, um, would be. And so we tried to commit to something so that we could honor the staff process and this new, hopefully getting to, um, you know, a better s- space at some point. And, um, so I just wanna say, I just wanna say that.
Yeah, this was all, all, um, done by, and at that time, there was also, um, a desire to leave a unallocated amount, um, within that, that two-point-three-million-dollar, um, pot, or pool that we were working with. And after we went through and looked at the percentages and all that, that, that came out to be roughly seventy thousand dollars, just over seventy thousand dollars. And, um, I, I, as Kaki pointed out, um, the total requests were just under three-point-three million dollars. Um, as she said, one of the things that was in, that, um, was stressed by the work group as we went through this process was to not tie agencies to previous funding amounts. And just because you came in at seventy thousand dollars and didn't mean you were guaranteed that amount. And vice versa, just because you had gotten eleven thousand dollars the prior year didn't mean you were tied to only a two, three, four incremental increase. To be able to allow for that movement to, to the agencies, um, based upon, um, application scores. And so, as we go through these, that is what, we're gonna look at it a little bit differently. I'm gonna show them by the, the, um, priority areas and show how much funding is in each of the priority areas and then look at what agencies fell in, in each of these, and then we'll look at the, after we go through that, we'll look at the unfunded amounts at the end, and I'm sure there'll be discussion amongst, as we get throughout there. Um, but I did wanna point out that for, there was three-point-two million, and of that, the total unfunded request amount was, um, roughly one point, one point two million dollars worth of unfunded requests. And there was, so we were able to do a lot, but there was, because we kind of, as Kaki said, took the, took the shackles off the agencies on what they were able to request, there was, um, a substantial increase in what we had seen in the amount, amount of actual requests overall.
Yeah, but that also meant that some, what you're saying, some people went higher and went...
And we'll see that, uh, we can talk about this when we get through, but, um...
And some of that was purposeful because we felt like if there were really essential, whatever, exemplary type of things, that we wanted to make sure that we were investing in them and focusing those investments.
Yeah, and I do have some comments, um, once we get through this, but...
Sure, and, and just one quick question, before this process was ch- was changed, what was the maximum, um, amount that could be funded?
We had, uh, I believe it was, I can't remember the exact year we, we went through, but we had made some process change it out somewhere around the two thousand fifteen, two thousand seventeen timeframe. And, um, we had set it up so that the maximal, uh, maximum increase was roughly ten percent.
Oh, year to year.
Uh, from, from year to year, we, we, there was kind of a, a guideline, it wasn't a... Council could always alter those recommendations, but the, the guidelines were no, no less than ninety percent, if you scored in certain areas, no less than ninety percent. It, it varied from tier to tier, but no less than ninety percent of your prior year, um, allocation, but also up to a hundred at, at, in a very, again, this varied from year to year, up to a hundred and ten percent.
So the, the maximum was percent increase, not a s- top dollar amount?
Not a top dollar amount, and a lot, and, and part of the feedback, one of the reasons that we did make this change, part of the feedback was, agency said, "Well, I was gr- grateful and glad to get into the process to be able to receive some funding from the city, but we came in in such a low amount that, that's not really what we need. We really need two, three, four times what we asked for, but we didn't wanna turn down the initial funding because we needed that funding to, to, to carry on our operations." So that was part of the feedback that helped us to say, "Okay, well, we need to take, not look at traditionally what you've gotten year after year."
And if, if your last year's funding determines what this year's funding is, it would be very hard for new agencies, even new agencies that were, uh, providing a service the city sorely needed, it would be very difficult for them to sort of break into the old A B R T process. And so part of the feedback was internal and part of it was external in terms of shifting so that it, it was sort of fresh every year, this idea that you could assess how much you needed and ask for it every year as opposed to being tied to last year's.
And so we'll go, we'll go through each of these, um, the, the priority areas, and I've got the, I organized the slides by the priority areas that were receiving the, the most amount of funding based on the applications, um, and we'll go over these, um, now. The first one we're gonna look at is the education and youth area. Um, there were twenty-three total applications for just over one point one million in this, under this priority area. And we, and just to clarify, we did ask the agencies to self-identify which priority area, um, their programs most identified with. This was not something that staff said, "Oh, well, you fit under education, you fit under housing." We asked them to, to self-identify in the, in this process. And so these, these were the ones that identified under the education and youth priority area, and there was roughly, um, six hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars that was given out. Um, and just as a reminder, in that top-left quadrant there, the, the central exemplary, that was roughly ninety-seven percent of the ask. Um, and in the, the important exemplary, that was roughly fifty-five percent of the ask, and that's where all of the applications that were funded for this, um, fell. And I've also, on the bottom of these slides, for, uh, reference to the budget document. So if, if you did wanna see year over year, there's reference to the budget document pages so you can say, see what they, uh, were funded at in the prior years. Community and public safety, um, we had eleven applications at, at seven hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, uh, worth of requests.
I just have a question. I would just like to know those numbers while we're sitting here, I would just like to look at them.
The budget pages, it, we, we printed off, we printed off some, uh, handouts of, of those budget pages so that we could, good, good, so that you can look at those. So, well, Chrissy's going to, um, get those and we'll bring those up here in just a, just a second. So, um, oh, and looking at this, as I said, there was eleven programs that self-identified under community and public safety, with seven hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars worth of requests. They fell under the, uh, the ones that were funded, I should say, fell under the essential exemplary and the essential solid categories, um, and the amount funded for those agencies was roughly six hundred and thirteen, that was just shy of six hundred and thirteen thousand dollars. And again, those are, depending on the, the agency, that's either pages H eight to H eleven, or J six to J seven in our budget document. Next is, um, affordable housing. There were fourteen total applications that self-identified here for affordable, under affordable housing priority area. Um, eight hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars worth of requests, and of those requests, um, five hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars were, were funded. And again, all of these agencies fell, uh, under either the exemplary essential or solid essential, um, category for funding. Health, uh, twelve applications under this area, three hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars, um, and one hundred and ninety-seven thousand was, was funded. And again, all of these were under the central grouping, either in the exemplary or solid category. Jobs and wages, this was the, the area that saw the least amount of applications and the least amount of dollar amount, dollar amount applications. There was only five total applications that, uh, identified under, self-identified under jobs and wages, and only a hundred and twenty-three thousand, um, almost a hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars, uh, worth of request. And of that, um, there was one program, uh, funded at twenty-three thousand, two fifty. And we'll, we'll get into all of the unfunded amounts and, and all these programs that are listed here since they all requested. Additional to, to what was being funded, um, are on those slides as well, so we'll have those, those programs coming back up again, just for your reference. Finally, there was a separate, uh, group, I'll have to let Kaki talk about this a little bit more. The, uh, capacity building applications, there were sixteen programs that applied, um, about roughly a hundred and fifty-one thousand dollars worth of requests. Of those, the group that reviewed them recommended six. Um, for funding, this went through a different process that, um, that I was not a part of, so I'm gonna have to let Kaki talk more about how those were reviewed. But those, uh, requests were capped at ten thousand dollars, um, and, um, of those six programs, it came out to be fifty-five thousand dollars worth of requests, and I don't know if you wanna talk about how those were reviewed a little bit?
Initially, we had said that this was gonna be, that the capacity building applications would be reviewed by staff, uh, but we decided actually to engage some of our community, our community review team members as part of that process. Um, we felt like we knew we were gonna be in a position where we were gonna be saying some of these applications would shouldn't be, uh, or we wouldn't have enough money to fund them, um, and so we asked actually for several review team members to join us in that process. We, we didn't have a formal application, so we asked, we had some specific elements we wanted in applications. Um, we did imagine what those sort of capacity building activities might look like, but we made it broad enough so that, um, an agency could have fun, could request funds for the thing that they needed most. It was a pretty significant priority made, uh, given to those applications that were equity-based. Um, and I believe all of the ones that are listed here for funding are equity-based projects.
Okay, so now, um, just like the other ones, we're gonna kind of walk through, um, the, the variants, um, from what was requested. And so all those programs, I tried to, to differentiate and drew that red line to show everything to, above and to the left of the, those red lines there, um, received some amount of funding. Um, this is the difference between what their full ask was and what they received. Um, everything below and to the right of that red line, um, in the, kinda in the lower-right portion of the, the quadrants there, did not receive any funding for these, for these particular programs. Under education and youth, there was a total of four hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars of unfunded requests. Um, and you can see the amounts and the agencies there. And we can, I don't know how you wanna handle these, but we can go through all of, look at all the unfunded slides and then kind of come back and, and talk about them, or we can talk about anything you wanna pick out individually on these slides as we get there. It's up to, to council's desire on that one.
I'm fine to go through all of them, I do have a question, 'cause specifically, I'm looking at a lot of these organizations in the lower-right quadrant, and when, I think I've already brought this up with, with Ryan, I was under the impression, mist- mistakenly, it's my fault, but that the, um, funding for the arts, much while we were holding the dollar steady, I thought that people were still applying for those. So to me, a lot of these, like Lighthouse and Front Porch and Music Resource Center, to me, they could probably fall more in line with that. But we held those dollars firm by organization, like basically, we froze that for another year. And so that requires us to then reevaluate that. So what are your thoughts as reviewers on those kinds of applications? And they, uh, they clearly don't necessarily line up as essential in some of these, but yet, we've identified that culture and arts is important, but that's a whole different funding mechanism.
Right, and that was one of the pieces, uh, uh, on the, the, kind of that ongoing efforts, future decision points, future, um, eff- future, uh, conversations slide was around the review of the arts programs. And you're right, there is a lot of these, especially on, on this slide, that do, that you could look at as arts-related programs.
And culture, yeah.
Now, because we did hold, we, we, the decision was made when we approached council, I, I'm blanking on the exact date, I think it was in the, in the spring and summer. Was made to hold those while we were determining the best review mechanism and the best way to review them and how to, and how to, to fund those arts applications, to hold them at level funding from what they received in the pre- previous year. Now, however, we did not have a mechanism to, to take new requests at that time, um, because we were holding everything level. And we did not preclude any of those arts agencies from saying, "I have an education," in this case, "I have an education program" that I think is, might be worthy of, of review and of some city funding, and apply for those dollars through this, this process as well. Now, you're right, some of them may have spared veteran in arts review process, but in order to try to, to, to make that, to, to be able to fund some of these programs, there were some applications that, that could have fallen in that, that kind of gray area between arts and education.
And I think this is exactly what you're pointing out, is the space that the arts programs find themselves in is sort of stretching to try to meet, uh, a sort of best practice evaluative goal around some of these other priority areas, or not succeeding in terms of applying simply for, as a straight-up arts program. And so they're sort of, uh, force themselves into some of these hybrid kinds of programs. And they're not, uh, it's not, they're not winning against, like, our traditional sort of rubric in either one. And so part of what we want to ask the arts organizations is, "How should we approach this?" And so, I mean, I think the arts have been sort of pushing back against the old-school A B R T in a number of ways in a number of years, and it's never quite, we've put them in, we've taken them out, we haven't ever quite found the right match, and that's what we're gonna try to do for this, uh, sort of iteration for the summer.
And I think it's important for us to communicate out to that group, because I think they were feeling pretty defeated 'cause they realized, like, "Well, we're way down, to be in this quadrant, you know, was, was notable," um, so...
Yeah, and while I, y- yeah, they, they are, i- in this particular version, to fit on the slide, I did, I, I wanna point out that, um, we did not have any applications that the review team fell, had no direct connection to these priority areas. So all of these, you know, we, we took off that final category, so they're not all the way to the far le- in the far le- or far-right bottom because they had no current connection and didn't have a, the, the strongest application. Um, they are, you know, they're kind of, they are where they are, but I did wanna point out that we had no applications that did not meet a direct connection, so we are, you know, in the review team's eyes, at least, all of these applications did have, were at least at the minimum helpful to meeting one of these priority areas, um, and, and a lot of them fell in the essential and important ranges.
And then years passed, because of the way we tied the funding to previous years, there were actually very few organizations that, that were sort of fell into a pool where they weren't recommended by somebody for funding. But that changes the way we've... That changes the way we've adopted this new process. And so it does, that those programs might be recommended for a reduced amount in the old-school look at this, method for looking at this, as opposed to the way we've looked at it this year.
And there, there was a, I can't remember exactly which counselor brought this up, but I believe there was a question from one of the counselors related around the area of, we have been hearing from these agencies that this, you know, because of these funding decisions, there could be some, some agencies that are, have to shut down programs or really reduce how that, those programs are gonna operate. And I did wanna point out that for each individual agency, we, within the vibrant community funds report, we did include a narrative on what the impact was. Allowed, and this was taken directly from the agency's application to let them say, if you do not give us all or a portion of the funding, what does that mean to our operations? And so you can see, you know, what they reported out to us of, hey, if we don't get this. Now I understand situations can very much change, as we are all witnessing right now, on a, on a day-to-day basis. But at the time, a couple months ago, this is what they foresaw as the impact on their organizations if they did not get the city funding.
And is the impact on their operations, is that factored in any way into the scoring? Or is that just something included in the narrative but not reflected in the scoring?
Included in narrative, not reflected, I think it's one of the biggest questions about this change process, is how, whether the review teams should and then how the review team should evaluate the, the agencies need, not the need they're addressing in the community, but the agencies' need for the funding. And we, we have not done that historically, in fact, we've done somewhat the opposite, which is to reward agencies that have a sort of, a strong administrative foundation, which is considered best practice. And it's a, sort of the approach has been investing the taxpayer's dollar in the surest possible outcome, as opposed to one that's less certain, where the need might be greater for the city's funding. We just haven't, and I think that's an interest, that has been an interest, has come up again and again, we just don't have the mechanism for doing it. And what, it will certainly be one of the drivers of the conversation in summer.
Moving to the next one, community and public safety. Again, there's roughly a hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars worth of these requests that remained, remained unfunded. Again, those requests to the, the top left over there on the left-hand side are variants from what was proposed. They did receive some amount, and this was the variance between what their request was and what was actually recommended based on those formulas in the, in the matrix. And the, the others on the right, received no funding for those particular programs. Affordable housing, there was three hundred thousand dollars worth of unfunded requests. Again, a mixture of the variance between what was recommend, what was proposed and what was requested, and then some other programs that did not receive funding at all. And health, roughly a hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars worth of unfunded requests. And then finally.
Excuse me, can I ask you one question about that last slide? On our own W R I P, four thousand eighty.
It's the RAP program?
Right.
Yeah, I should point out, there are, and there were a couple errors in the rankings and, and some, some dollar amounts that were in the vibrant community fund report that we noticed after the, after the, the funding. The RAP program was one that was listed as a two B and I'd have to look, I wrote this down in my, on my actual report, and I believe that was a, it fell, it fell into that category of the solid essential, which is two A, I believe. So there is a couple areas like that in the report that I, we will send out some clarification on.
Well, there, there are two points of clarification. One is that in the document you sent to us, that that particular program was listed as, as two B and therefore wouldn't be funded at all. I think I saw on earlier slide that, and, but, but in the book, you actually have it funded at seventy-nine hundred and twenty dollars. Up there, you've got four thousand eighty dollars.
That's the difference between what they requested, so that's just between what they requested and what they, and what they were proposed to receive. And again, that was one where, when we looked at the, the score, it had been inadvertently listed as a, a two B instead of a, a two A, which I found.
Looks like a one B, is that right?
I think one is, I think it goes one, two, three, four on the, the, on up, up and down in A, B, C, D across the top. I believe I'm correct on that.
Okay, so.
So that would be a two A.
Gotcha.
And so that's where the, it was a typo in the report on that, because we double-checked the score and it was at that threshold to be in the, the two A area.
Thank you.
Finally, jobs and wages, there was a hundred thousand dollars worth of unfunded requests in this particular area. And again, literacy volunteers was the one agency in this area that, that received some funding. And there's the variance from their request, and the rest of these programs received no funding in the, the proposed budget. So, this is, we're happy to ask questions, or excuse me, answer questions. We may have questions, as, as Kaki has laid out, we have plenty of questions to ask you, but I think we'll hold, hold those for, for our August work session. But we'll be happy to answer any questions on any of the agencies and listen to your discussion.
Well, can I ask you one thing about the Sin Barreras? Am I correct that the only organizations out of all of the ones that applied that have anything to do with refugees or Hispanic people or anything else, are those two right there that were deemed weak but helpful? I R C and Sin Barreras? I don't remember seeing any others.
I mean, there are several of these agencies that, it may not be their primary focus, but they do help those, such as, I know, I mean, speaking of this slide, the literacy volunteers. That has been a shift from kinda the GED side to the, the ESL, English as a Second Language, kind of helping on that side of the literacy. So that would be one program that would be, be that way. But I mean, again, it's not, they, the, those agencies focus on cer, specific populations, whereas, you know, literacy volunteers is open to anyone looking to, you know, increase literacy, both on the English as a second language and just the improving on the literacy side, so.
And it's important, I think, to honor the people who are doing the work, right? And are reaching the most people, and we've had this discussion before. So if other organizations do some, but we know that this is the only organization that is devoted to Hispanic families, refugee community, that's completely different from an agency including it in their mission.
Well, and I guess, I guess this is probably a broader thing that maybe we'll get into in the August work session, but, you know, I think some of the concerns I had about making blind decisions and having an unlimited cap of the funding amount, as well as not evaluating the impact of not funding something on the capacity of the organization, I think, are reflected in here. And I've just got a lot of concerns about it, again, like Sin Barreras, like is, you know, they're gonna, one of the, the only organization doing that kinda work. I think they're gonna have even more work coming up with the General Assembly's changes to driver's license laws and working with community members to navigate that process. And, you know, you see in their application that, you know, that eleven thousand dollars is significant for them, for a matching grant to fund their employees, to have the capacity to just work there and do anything. And so I understand, you know, the difficulty of making that part of the process, it's just a lot of the funding concerns are really concerning to me is just looking at each funding decision, what is the proportionate impact on that organization's ability to operate? Like some organizations maybe not getting that funding, you know, doesn't mean much, and some, maybe that's like forty percent of their program costs.
And this is the really unfortunate part, and what I really appreciate about this agency, they came in and said, whether we gave them funding or not, they were gonna figure it out. So they are committed to making sure that they help people no matter what. And that's the kinda agency that you know will produce results, right? And so we still have this unallocated amount, which I do have one question for council, because this is really hard for me. And I shared that it was going to be very hard. And I mean, looking through this has been a challenge, so, but I tried to commit to a process and I'm gonna try to honor that agreement. But I do have one ask, and just to see where, and I've talked to staff about this, but I still feel like we, and I know the measurements and solution advisory group will get there. And I'm on that, and Counselor McGill is on that. But we have, we still have to have a conversation about that, based on, you know, there were issues with me appointing the group or pulling the group together, but it was a very diverse group of people that was on there. Versus now, we, and we did appoint the people, but it's about who applied and how people think that it's valued. So I've already stated, we went from having black women, white women, black men, white men, you know, who was there, staff and council members, to we walked into a room where there are six white men appointed to this process, making the decisions. Now, they do have skills, and we've had, and we had this discussion in the room with them, so this is not, and I didn't bring it up, even though I was thinking it for all the people. We were like, of course you did. But, and they agreed, you know, with that, the fact that, you know, who is not in the room influencing that discussion. So to say that is to say that we still have a lot of work to do. But I did wanna poll council on, one thing is that I still feel like, as much as we're trying to figure out the right process for this, we still have a lot of work to do. And I still feel like that measurements and, you know, solutions overall position for the city is, is needed. Like that that person, until we figure out, like, if we had polled Hispanic families and asked them, where do they get their services? What are their needs, and figured out that, where would it have come from? Right, like what would they have said? And how much would that have influenced whether Sin Barreras got resources or not? And I just think that's an important part of the equation, that starting that office to evaluate where all of our money is going is very important, and we don't have the money, right?
Right.
So, my ask is, if you all are willing to reduce the first category by the amount that the city staff has come up with, to hire for that position?
Wait, what?
I'm flipping through because I believe that was on.
So we need to find the money to hire for that position, and even based on how this process has gone, I'm not saying it has to be that category, but it would, that category has the most funding in it, or if we change the ranges. But I just think that it's still an important part, you were in the room when we started this process.
And so we, as the staff, we've suggested that we lower the position from a director of measurements to a manager. Instead of being one seventy-five, it'd be one twenty-five.
So what I'm asking is to.
What is the first category?
Either one A.
The, yeah, the, that's the essential exemplary programs that were funded at roughly ninety-seven percent of their request. I'd have to go, trying to go back to the beginning.
Yeah, so what, we need the money for this position, and as much as this funding, we are already challenged by funding the programs. We do not have the committed staff member, and even though this group is established, I doubt that this group can do that level of work alone, that can go in and, I mean, vibrant communities would be my choice to start with. But to evaluate, like, the impact overall on the community, the funding, whether the outcomes are actually occurring. Right now, this is self-report, has that changed? It's not changed, so we're not getting the information from the community about whether these agencies are doing.
And we knew that was gonna be the case, and that we were gonna be pursuing this, not do it all in one year, and that we were gonna be continuing on with this process to get to that point, so that we could have the objective perspectives from the people receiving these services. I, I agree that we need a resource within the city, and I think it goes well beyond vibrant community, I think it looks at all the ways that we spend our dollars internally and externally. So to me, it has to be a much more broader scope than just this, because this is only, I mean, it is a lot of money, but it's only two point three million dollars, is that what we're at right now, of our entire budget. And I think there's a lot of other places that we spend a lot more significant funds and big chunks, that we really should be making sure that we are having the return on our investment. So I'm hesitant to say that it's only for this purpose. And I'm also not sure where the funding's gonna come from, given our first hour of our discussion. I, I don't, I'd have great pause and, given like, all, all the conversations we had around the importance of the people who are really meeting essential needs and that we're not gonna fulfill them with these requests, because I, I think a lot of the arguments that we had were like, if we don't give them every, if we don't actually give them the chance to shine, with, this is what they're asking for, and if we don't give them that, how do we ever have a measure to show that what we've invested in has some traction, for people who are in that, that box?
No, I understand that, but I still think, and I still think there's a need, and again, not just for this, you know, for this funding, for almost all the funding the city gives out, is how it is measured.
Yeah, I agree.
And we're not, so every year, we just keep giving money. Like I said, I'm gonna reserve my comments, but I, it gives me still a lot of pause. And I don't think that we are gonna start being able to answer those questions until we can have that data in front of us, right? And we're not gonna get that without a person. I mean, it may be possible, but I don't think so.
Did I understand from the earlier convers, I mean, I know there was a discussion a second ago about the difference between funding it as a director versus a manager? Is it, is either position in the budget?
No, not at this time.
So if we were gonna fund it as a manager, we still have gotta find a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars?
That's correct.
Gotcha, okay.
And we have seventy unallocated here.
And I don't wanna use that, because I definitely think that we need to have some discussions, like the, what Sin Barreras, I, I don't know why, like I stated, you know, for me, if we're committing the amount of money we're committing to redevelopment and then not to fund like the internship program and what, you know, them getting people out and being trained as community leaders. I don't understand things like that, so I definitely don't wanna take up that entire seventy thousand if we are committed to the process that we say it. But I do think that it is so important for us to get just that piece moving in the city, where we are evaluating outcomes and we're not just relying on the report, self-reporting of agencies.
Kaki, can you speak to what you're anticipating the process is gonna be this coming six months, relative to addressing these concerns?
I mean, there's a couple of things, one is that the, I mean, the city, I think even one person honestly doesn't have the capacity to do a formal evaluation of all of the organizations or agencies that we invest in. And so I think if we were targeting or prioritizing our investments with two or three large grants to move some particular issue significantly, then the city, I think the city staff, either existing or new, could, could be a part of some formal evaluation. But if there's thirty-six funded programs and the contractual agencies and the Affordable Housing Fund and C D V E G, I think that's, that's prohibitive for the existing staff certainly, and even if there was an additional staff, it would be prohibitive to do formal evaluations. I think there's other evaluative things that, that somebody like that could be doing. In terms of getting to the next layer of prioritization, which would sort of, one of the things we talked about last summer when you adopted the five primary sort of priority areas, is that in future years, you could layer the prioritization and say, we want to, we're globally interested in affordable housing as a funding priority, and we're specifically interested in funding those projects that would address the needs of families involved in redevelopment. That we could do multiple layers of, of prioritization to really target what the city chooses to invest in. And that this, what we're in now is this sort of phase one of a different process, and that phase two could be really very specific, where you might, it's almost like sending in an R F P, saying we're interested in funding this particular aspect of affordable housing, and that that could, you could get there by making sure that you're hearing from community through whatever the measurements and solutions group comes up with. And for example, in Richmond, they might say, we're interested in affordable housing, and we're particularly interested in seniors in affordable. and we're particularly interested in seniors in affordable housing. So it's sort of, uh, really specifies the kind of prioritization that the city's interested in and doing it, we've talked about in years past or in the last, in, in the work group, whether you might do multiple year investments. We still haven't figured out the technical process for doing that as a city, but whether you did multiple year investments in whatever that targeted priority area was. And so I think there would be a, get to a place where, um, the sort of evaluative components that we have in place with this year with this sort of importance, um, criteria and with the sort of traditional evaluation of the, um, application, that you could get to a place where you're saying, we're really interested in somebody who's delivering this product. And it doesn't matter how they present it in the application and they, and it doesn't matter, um, sort of whether a group of people thinks it's essential or not. The city has already identified, we wanna fund this thing. Um, so I think that's coming in year two of this process, that particular layered prioritization. In terms of the sort of evaluative component, I think, um, it would take a team of researchers to formally evaluate those investments if we're gonna continue to fund this many kinds of projects. So I think it's a combination of strategies to make.
Yes, but having, even at the federal level, you can go and review state level. Like this is just something historically that, um, no one has done well, right? There's Moneyball for government, they say it in there. Federal government level, like evaluating outcomes. So we've been great at giving away money at just at every level. We have not been great at, you know, determining through a system whether what we're giving away works. Everyone says that, right? And so that is what has to shift. Um, and I just am hesitant to think that we can shift without being dedicated to that process. No, we don't know what it looks like. Yeah, staff needs to go back and review and maybe it's not one twenty-five or one seventy-five and maybe it's less, but we haven't committed to that part of the process. They might need, and I'm pretty sure they would, the advisory group, but that would be a dedicated staff member to looking at that, um, process. And again, it's easier to have organizations self-reporting than to create a tools or multiple tools and a process for getting that information back to the city for review. Um, how do people who are receiving the services feel? So I understand that it's working, I just don't see how we're gonna get there without that commitment. And not just again, for this program. I think once you have somebody on board with those skills, they would tell you, um, you know, that we have a lot to do to change that grading from the current F that it is. But anyway, so that's just my thoughts. And I sent it in an email, um, and we had discussions, so just, are there thoughts behind that process?
I'm, I'm just not clear where we're gonna get the resources for right now. Where do we wanna shift resources from to do it?
So for me, I think since this would be where they definitely should help us fix, I think CAF would be next. Um, but again, we talked about, there's a lot of potential that I don't understand why it couldn't come from here.
The amount that you're asking for is effectively about five percent of the vibrant community fund. Also, and your, your proposal, Mayor Walker, basically just take it out of the, the essential exemplary portion?
They just receive, we have a lot of emails and a lot of people are gonna speak. I think the other groups were cut significantly, they were at the ninety-seven percent, right? Of funding level and it just, for me would-
That would effectively make them about ninety percent. Just checking the math.
Rough, that's, that's about, about right. I'd have to find the precise number, but it's very close.
Can I ask one question that is not directly related to what we were just talking about? But, uh, it was prompted by an email that I got, uh, about the Lighthouse Studio Program. And the email that I got said, gee, the, the county called us exemplary and you guys are calling us, what, uh, I guess, helpful but solid, uh, and so out of the running. Is there any sense of, for one thing, is there any, any sense of, of, uh, why one jurisdiction might call it one and the other might call it another? Are there a different set of priorities between jurisdictions?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
It's too, um, previously the, uh, before we went down this, um, agency process change, the city and the county had submitted a, or excuse me, agencies had submitted a joint application to both the city and the county, um, and they were reviewed jointly, um, and there was one question that varied based on the, the strategic plans of the, the two localities, but the rest of the matrix were the same. We changed our evaluation tool slightly and moved to the five funding categories. And then, you know, the one piece I wanna point out with this agency, uh, for our internship, which was brought up is another one, like there were a lot of these agencies that were, I, in the, the past years, there's always been a stigma that you are not a good agency, you're not doing a good job if you don't get funding. And that wasn't the case this year because there was a large chunk of agencies, like if we go back, you know, at least twelve programs over two hundred thousand dollars, excuse me, over four hundred thousand dollars in that solid, important range, which, you know, that's, to me, that, that's not saying because you fell outside of these three funding categories that it's necessarily a bad program. And I, I, I definitely don't want these agencies to feel like because funding was not, they didn't get their full request or they didn't get the full ask, that we're passing a judgment on, oh, this was a bad agency, it just happens, there was a, a lot, this was something staff struggled with. There was a lot of high-scoring, well-scoring programs that because of the funding amounts that were, were being requested and because of the funding restrictions, we're not gonna see funding, we're not gonna see full funding, we're gonna see reductions. So, you know, they, they did, I was trying to look at the exact scoring on that one. I don't have it, I'm trying to find it in front of me. But yeah, it was solid and helpful. And so, you know, solid application is between eighty and a, and a ninety on a hundred point scale. And, you know, then there was that helpful designation based on the, the criterion. That's the one that really falls on those four, or excuse me, those five funding and priority areas where maybe, you know, that, on the arts and culture side, I, I know that, that came in under education. Maybe when we look at the arts and culture funding, maybe this is more appropriate to go in under that area. But based on what we had in front of us, you know, the, the group rated that as helpful to that. And so there's really, you know, while there, there's some similarities between the two processes, there's really very different review panels and very different, um, metrics that are used when, when looking at these particular applications, um, more so than there have been in, in prior years. And I know there's also, to, to prompt, what I think maybe Counselor Hill's question that's coming. There's also been a lot of agencies, um, that apply through this process and the CDBG process and the CAF fund and, and, and those other areas. There is conversations between these review groups and there is actually some cross, uh,
Pollination.
Not, not cross-pollination, I was getting rid of, but some, some cross-departmental, some cross-review team where there's members from, um, the housing, the CAF people that, that will sit and help us and will review the housing applications. There's members from these review groups that will go and, and be on the CDBG teams and those other teams. So there is, again, it also comes down to, well, it may be scored a little bit higher in this process than this process, but it all, all depends on the importance you're putting on each piece of the review matrix when you're going to look at. There may be different priorities under the CDBG funds as opposed to what's being looked at on the vibrant community fund. So there's, there may be some slight differences here or there, but that's, so there is that conversation going on and we do have conversations with, with the county on a lesser, um, basis than we do with, within our own applications. I don't know if Kaki wanted to weigh in more on that as well.
I think there's rationale for how that has happened in the past and how it could continue to happen, that there jurisdictionally or even within the organization, uh, that there might be different kinds of scores. I don't know that that's desirable and I do think that that's worth some conversation about aligning those, uh, sort of either priorities or criteria areas so that we're evaluating the same kinds of things regardless of what the pool of funding is. And so that, those are conversations that have certainly started internally. I, I hope one day we'll get to a place where we're coordinating with the county again around these kinds of funds, um, but until then, I think we have, uh, there's an opportunity for us to do better alignment internally.
I, it's, I think in the case of, of the Lighthouse Studio, if, if what you're saying is that it was sort of this, this mismatch or not quite a good match anyway between arts slash education and trying to sort of get a sense of it being shoehorned into a, a category that it's really not, not meant to be in. I mean, if we're gonna be serious in saying we're willing to entertain funding requests for dealing with the arts and, but nobody ever gets any money that way because they, unless they call themselves an education organization, then we're not really being very fair.
I think that's exactly what they have said to us in the past, which is why we're about, trying to evaluate how we should try to, um, assess and fund them maybe at a sort of a separate process than what the vibrant community fund is. And then we'll come to council and say, if we're evaluating arts programs with a different set of criteria, with a different set of priorities, how much money do you wanna allocate to that overall pool and how do you want us to proceed? And that will be part of our conversations in August.
So I know there's a lot of other questions. I just wanted to point out, we are at seven thirty-five. We have quite a few members of the public here that are gonna wanna speak. And I know there's, you got, there's some specific agencies that you guys are gonna, gonna wanna discuss. So I, I know we have all these, these bigger picture, larger process questions hanging out there for the future, um, that we're gonna be, definitely gonna be discussing in more depth in August and beyond, I'm sure. Um, but I think it, you know, trying to be a good steward of the time and of, of, of the, the audience's time and that people have come here to, to listen to these deliberations. I don't know how, if you wanna go through the agencies first or you wanna hear from them first or how do you wanna handle it?
I could-
What do you mean, go through the-
Like, you had talked about wanting to, that seventy, that seventy thousand dollars and-
Oh, no, I think we definitely need to wait to hear.
Well, and I, I would just say quickly before public comment for myself, again, you know, not being part of this process when it was beginning, so there's a lot, you know, I, I don't know. Um, but I would just say, like, looking at where we are now, um, I'm willing to mostly trust the process, but I do have, um, you know, like I said, concerns about, one, the impact on an organization's capacity not being part of the scoring process and no limit to the money backfiring a little bit from an equity perspective. Particularly, top concerns for me are if there's ways to fund the Far Internship Program, Sinbera's and the Urban Agricultural Collective. Again, looking at the relative impact to their capacity, um, and their funding being zeroed out. And then beyond that, there's a lot of other stuff too. I think those are top priorities, just looking at the relative impact on their capacity. But, you know, from an equity perspective, again, just looking at the free clinic, legal aid, justice, community organizing work, homelessness, like-
And I think, yeah, I, and I feel the same way. I mean, I am committing to trusting the process because I said I would, but I have a lot of reservations. Um, and I have a list, um, here that includes, you know, the Free Clinic, the CIC, and I talked about that before, um, because we started the, um, Business Equity Fund there and now we're not, Computer for Kids, Legal Aid, um, MACA on our own, um, SARAH Shelter for Help. And that's one of the ones that are, is clear. I don't know if it's just because there was more funding requested, but it's essentially the Survivor Service and the Outreach Community Service. You can look at those and see the similarities, um, and they both are doing apparently a great job and you know it's an essential service, but the amount, you know, the difference in funding there. Um, Sinbera's, the Women's Initiative, um, you know, so I had a lot. So, and I was here for the process and I still have a lot of questions. And that's why I think, and after going to our first Measurements and Solution Group and, you know, thinking about, um, that, and I do have another discussion I want, I'm gonna ask for you all there for, um, during the council meeting next Monday and I'll send it before then. But I just think that it's, um, and we're not changing anyone who's currently on it, but, um, just to point that out if anybody was concerned.
Well, and I, I would just say, um, you know, and I, I would agree and, you know, I'm largely committed to trusting this process, but I would say for myself, I am open and would like to find ways to not change everything, but find ways to fund some of these organizations who are doing vital community work who because of this change in the process, might be losing out funding that equals fifty percent of a program's capacity or funding. And trying to, if there's any way to, for, if there's some of these organizations who have a program and because of this shift means that program doesn't exist anymore, um, I'm open to trying to find a way to match that without saying like, we're just gonna shift around everything.
Right, and yes, while this is, you said the, the magic equity word and I, we did pull up that, that dollar amount in the equity fund now. While that is the one, that is available to potentially use some dollars from there, but the one cautionary tale, and we've seen this with some other stuff, is that is one-time funding. So that means next year, we're gonna have to find, anything you pull from that for, for this current year, that means next year, that's a hole that we've automatically created in that budget. So while I'm not saying, I'm not recommending one way or the other on that, I'm saying just be aware that if we do pull from there, that, that could-
And I don't think that's any different from what we've done previous years, but I'm really hesitant, cause if we're gonna do, equity fund is for projects that come up through the year. This is the process for this, unless we're changing it, then we're not gonna debate about using, well, I hope we wouldn't, I'm just wanna buy.
Well, my, my goal is to, to try and meet that need within this budget and process because I, I agree, one, it's straying from our goal of the, the equity fund or strategic initiatives and two-
And trust in this process, cause then we're gonna start saying, debating about what to fund, what not to fund, even all the equity fund.
Right.
This process was supposed to help eliminate that.
Um, and I, again, not being part of it when it started, I would just say, because it's new, like, I'm open to tweaking this process and not being like, again, cause I'm just, I still worry and I think, in my opinion, looking at some of the funding that can backfire in some areas when we're just making zero or a hundred percent funding decisions, blind, not looking at the relative impact on the capacity, um, of a nonprofit or a program within a nonprofit.
We knew you would, we knew you would be here. And between, I mean, I, I have, I wanna support all these things. Like, don't get me wrong, at the same time, what you guys have specifically listed off is like majority of these things. And so it kind of makes us feel like, oh, we'll be going back to where we were before, where we're just sprinkling everything and so-
I had one request, which I think we haven't fulfilled yet. And this is only to get us to a better process hopefully by the time we do this again. Um, because I don't think we're gonna, I think we are, gonna have some challenges getting there. Um, and we just need to make the commitment to start evaluating outcomes in a way that we haven't. But, um, a- again, I have said, but you haven't heard me say, flip the numbers, agencies, fund something else. I'm here to, I'd say at the seventy thousand dollars, I just wanna talk about that.
I would like to bring up one issue. And that's that we have asked the Community Investment Collaborative to oversee a grant for us. And this is part of, this cost them money to oversee. And that we also did not fund them this year.
But it's two parts to that. We also did not allocate additional funding for the grant, so they don't have any thing to oversee anymore.
Oh, okay.
Well, it, it's a revolving loan fund, so there's presumably something.
No, that was only nine percent if I remember. No, it was lower than that because it was one percent or three percent, yeah.
It is intended to, to function as a revolving loan fund. Um, it was a hundred thousand that was allocated, um, last March. And that money's largely been deployed and is starting to come back in. Uh, Stephen Davis is here tonight, he'll probably speak during public comment, but, um-
But we, they, there was a need for more funding, right, last year. And the money, and we changed the interest rate so that, um, the businesses could benefit more from actually, you know, building a business versus worrying about paying the loan back. So it's less money that's gonna come back in and some of that fund supported the administrative process.
That's correct, yes, the interest rates are low. Um, but they're, they're repaying principal and interest and that's already starting to come in and revolve and, um-
So are, so is it accurate that CIC is administering a city loan fund?
Yes.
And then are they, what are they receiving from, are they receiving what, if anything, from the city for overseeing a city loan fund? for overseeing a city loan fund? I guess that's just what I'm trying to figure out.
But that money isn't gonna come in, that's what I'm saying, at the, I'm, I'm actually advocating for two things, which I, you know, is not in this discussion. But again, they needed more, the money is not gonna come in quickly, right, from the.
Well, it's gonna start coming in. People are paying back loans, they're two to three to five-year loans, so it's, it's starting to come back in.
But the Business Equity Fund was separate. Process.
The Business Equity Fund was a hundred thousand dollars last March that was sent to them, and a piece of that was allowed to be used for administrative. So they did get a, a piece of it for administrative, but I think the question here is, they've been funded by the city for seven to ten years, however long they've been in existence, at some level for operations, and that apparently is not included this year, which is a concern.
Okay.
Y'all ready to hear public comment?
Yes.
Okay.
Hi, we're open the meeting to public comment.
Hi, everyone, good evening. My name's Kathy Green. I'm an intern for a FAR program. The FAR program has been around for over twenty years, and we have several members here that represent FAR, some graduates, some interns, and some staff. What we're asking is for you all to reconsider funding for the FAR intern pro, program. I feel that it's a very educational program for the young and the old, and it needs to continue on. Add anything?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Colleen Keller, I'm here on behalf of the Free Clinic. This may be a little dicey, but I think we need to respond to some of the questions. We did not receive any funding for the medical clinic, none. So, we saw four hundred and eighty-two new patients last year, new. Forty-four percent of our patients were of color. So when we talk about equity, what we look at is, are we giving proportionate access? And that's more than proportionate. The criticism, so, and I just, what was surprising is that the city actually has a goal to reduce the adverse impact of chronic disease. So one thing that's inside the medical clinic is a pharmacy at the Free Clinic. It is a two-million-dollar pharmacy. The cost of insulin for someone without insurance is about three hundred dollars a month. The pharmacy may be the biggest reason that anyone comes to the Free Clinic. So, I would like to advocate for at least returning us to the seventeen thousand dollars that we used to get. I know this was blind. That's sixty dollars per city resident that we see, and it gives them medical, mental health, and pharmacy. I don't wanna take up too much time, but I want to address the comments that came back from this panel that was concerned about the overall fiscal management in the organization that maintains reserve of more than one year's operating budget. So, the city, the state is going to cut the legislative appropriation. We all know that, there was Medicaid expansion. And if we can get everybody to Medicaid, I, we are all for it, and the board voted, I mean, we'll scale down our operations. But that hasn't happened yet. And so we have been building a little bit of an extra fund so that we don't have to cut our daytime staff provider while these funding changes occur. So it is a quarter of a million a year that we're likely to lose in support of our medical clinic. So our goal was two years of a buffer so that we can insulate our own community from these changes. So, we got to that money because our total admin and fundraising expenses are eight percent, eight. That's an audited number, I'm happy to share it. We got rid of our finance director, our human resource director, and a development director to achieve that. So this money did not come from funders, it came from efficient operations. So I just wanna close and say, as much as, I mean, I did really honor the concept of this process, but we had a distinct feeling that scrappy is seen, it is seen that you can't be large and scrappy, and I think that we can surely demonstrate that we have been really scrappy. We are open five days a week and three nights, and we're open now running into this virus. So I just wanna make sure we are big dollars, we're a big organization, that we understand that scrappy is not just ten thousand dollars. The Free Clinic's huge, it's eight thousand visits a year. But if we don't have these funds, we can't do some of the things we're doing to continue and to pivot with all the changes in healthcare. Thank you.
And one question.
I'm sorry.
Just the impact of the bill being passed that's going to limit insulin to fifty dollars a month. Have you factored that in yet? That did pass, right, Mr. Blair?
Yes.
Yes.
Not signed.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, we, I think we can hope. I'm not sure. I mean, this is a big, I, I don't feel ready. I'd wanna ask our pharmacist about that, but insulin and inhalers are the largest things that we're sourcing through donation programs. I'm sorry, I can't say more specifically.
Yeah, Mr. Blair, do you know?
Ma'am, I'm not aware about the answer to your question, but I am aware of the legislation, and I can forward a copy of that to the council.
Okay. Do you know if it's going to the governor for signature, or you don't know?
Well, it, yes, that's going to the governor for signature, but in terms of the other aspect.
Oh, yeah, no, that was the only thing, and I just think, and not that, because I definitely understand, you know, where people go for services, just asking if that would impact at all that change on what your needs were.
Well, and the other, that's a cap on what insurers can charge, so I, that may change for people who aren't insured. I, I just don't know.
But it should change the, okay, so just something to check. Yeah, I understand, yeah.
Actually, I have one other question for you. You, you were talking about fifteen thousand dollars being the current amount this year, is that right?
You know, we get zero for the medical clinic.
Well, that's in the coming year's budget.
Yes, seventeen thousand three hundred was the amount that we have gotten in, for numerous previous years.
And, and that's, you had two separate requests, one for dental piece and the other for, I guess, other things. Is that seventeen-three, is that?
That's just medical.
Okay, the, so it's the one that is, you've asked for thirty-five for that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, gotcha, thank you.
Anyone else?
Good evening. So, first off, thank y'all for y'all hard work. I don't normally thank y'all, but I'm thanking y'all tonight. You know, I just think that the issue sometimes with our budget, and I can hear the mayor's frustration and Michael's frustration with certain things, but, like, we just don't look at what people need sometimes. We take the people's needs and we just kinda toss them under the rug. You know, like affordable housing, that's a need, right? I think we all know that people need to live here. The Free Clinic, like, people need healthcare. You can't just rely on UVA. Not everybody is going to UVA. There's racial issues with UVA. We know how black and brown people are treated at UVA as far as getting adequate healthcare. So some people don't feel safe going to UVA. To the Unity Day thing, I mean, you know, you, the, the, the starting and stopping stuff, I think y'all gotta get away from. Because if you're gonna start and stop something, maybe you should stop funding all these nonprofits that you fund. That would be a great start. Start pulling money from nonprofits that you give money to, because you give a lot of money to nonprofits. And I'm not just saying that because I'm on the Unity Day Committee or that I have Unity Day events, but like, after twenty-seventeen, the city so-called claimed to wanna do stuff, and then you create something to do something for the community, to try to wipe out that whole image, and then you say, oh, well, we might not fund that. Like, y'all gotta stand on one side of the fence, or just don't stand on it at all. Some of your departments, like, every department probably need money and funding. Back to this fire thing, I'm gonna bring that up. But you're not gonna fund everybody, and you bounce back year to year. It's either fire, schools, or police. Fire, schools, or police. It's like a never-ending, you know, it just, it never ends. It's, it's, it's a revolving door with those three departments. But, like, I just think we gotta do better with the money and do better with, especially like questioning black leadership. Or off the record, not budget, but like, everybody wanna question black leadership. Some of these same funding requests came forward when Maurice and Mike Signer was in the leadership roles. But we didn't get as much pushback. We didn't get as much PR attention. We didn't get these publicity stunts. We didn't get none of this stuff. But now that we have Nakia as mayor, Mayor Walker, and Dr. Richardson, now we got all this PR, we got all this public attention with people being called ignorant because they want alternatives and options. Like, as a body of government, you guys should put something in place to just, not accept that type of behavior. I can't go to my boss and say, look, you gonna give me a raise, or you gonna fill these other positions that I got in my department, or else. I wouldn't have a job. And if y'all did that to y'all boss, y'all probably wouldn't have a job either. But like, it's just, it's, it's beyond a budget at this point, and it's about you guys funding people adequately and fairly and equally. And we haven't been doing that over the course of a long time in this city. And I think that when you make these decisions, you should think about that. Not everybody living in a half a million dollar home. Not everybody living in a three hundred thousand dollar home. Not everybody can afford their taxes. So, so think about that stuff when you make these decisions. Because not everybody is like you. If you had to put somebody else shoes, shoes on and live their life for a day, you probably wouldn't be able to survive. So think about that.
Good evening, Stephen Davis with the Community Investment Collaborative. Last March, as Mr. Engel mentioned, you funded the Business Equity Fund and made a great investment in minority-owned businesses throughout the community. That initial investment of a hundred thousand dollars has all gone out, and at least, to date, about ten thousand has come back, will be continued to use for loan, and the city's Economic Development Authority added to that loan fund last year of another fifty thousand. So we have capacity now, and that fund will revolve ongoing. You added nine thousand to it to subsidize the interest rate, to make it more attractive, and a even kind of better investment in minority-owned businesses, and so that just made the interest rate a little lower. What we've been able to do with that fund is leverage the investment you've made over the years in CIC. That investment has built the pipeline of a lot of those applicants by giving them the business assistance they need to develop their business plans, put in their financial systems in place, and get the technical assistance to really put the loans to work and grow their businesses. And in this year, with the recommendation that we are at zero funding from the Vibrant Community Fund process, that support is, will make it much more challenging to provide, continue to build that pipeline and sort, support the borrowers after loans are made, which we continually do. So, I just come tonight to urge you to consider, if you can, find a way, I know you have, I can't imagine how to make the decisions that you're making, but to at least urge you to support CIC and find a way to do that. And with it, I brought one of our clients, who's both the recipient of a Business Equity Fund loan and many of the services that come with it, both before and after the loans, to share just a little bit about how we've helped them.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Stephen with Stephen's Home Services, a small minority-owned business in Charlottesville. CIC's financial management program provided a personal assistant who helped us more clearly to understand our finances, separate personal from per, business finances from personal, and allocate for funds for improved uses. Currently, they still monitor our financial success, other business needs on a weekly basis. Without these tools and resources, my business would still be where it was a few years ago, static and struggling to see progress and potential growth. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, I'm Brandon Collins. I work for FAR as an organizer. I previously worked as the internship coordinator for many years. And those of you who are familiar with FAR are probably familiar with what things were like in this community back when I started with FAR in twenty-twelve. There was nothing but a battle between residents and the Housing Authority. And that was a, you know, going even further back to nineteen ninety-eight when we were formed. It's been a battle. It's only until recently that we've been able to build partnerships with the City of Charlottesville and the Housing Authority, and other partnerships around this community. Part of that, because we fought so hard that we built some power, and we made y'all realize that residents of public housing deserve to have control over their own destinies and their own futures. And what did we do? We went out and we found the resources to try to make that happen. Last year, the year before, when we've come to you during the budget session, we haven't been advocating for FAR. We've been advocating for Housing Authority, we've been advocating for resources. We've come to you saying, we need fifty million dollars to provide equity reparations that this community is due. And for the most part, y'all have been okay with that. That's awesome, and we've been a willing partner in that. We're going out, we are doing the work. Our internship has been around for twenty years, a little over twenty years. It's the bedrock of our organization. It's not like we just go out and talk to a bunch of residents and say, hey, go into this room and make these decisions about mixed finance. Understand all the HUD regulations. Figure out low-income housing tax credit rules, what that's gonna be like in the home you live in two years from now. I challenge any one of y'all to do that without any kind of preparation, but we got, we trained the folks. The folks we have, FAR has a contract for decision-making, right? Most of our board are former interns. FAR has seats on the Charlottesville Redevelopment Housing Authority. Two of those seats are currently former interns. One of them's not even a public housing resident, but was an intern, was a public housing resident. We have seats on the redevelopment committee, the main decision-making body for redevelopment, right? That's the leadership. Those are former interns, for the most part. And our interns, so they, they go on to do this stuff. They form the bedrock of our leadership, and they have to learn this stuff. But they also go out and do the grunt work, right? They leave the internship, they go out, they talk with their peers, they spread the word. They do the grunt work, they do the door knocking, they do the flyering. They go on and they talk with their peers, they form working groups. We have interns doing amazing work at South First Street. Former interns, current interns, and hopefully some future interns doing that work. Same at Crescent Halls. It's amazing, gratifying work that's finally bringing equity to this community. And it seems really, really fantastically wrong to give us funding for redevelopment involvement of residents while taking away our capacity to do the one thing that supports this organization completely and fully, and we are always gonna have this internship program, whether you guys fund it or not. We tried to be straight with you. We could've called this a jobs program. We would've been really competitive in this process. Really competitive in that process. That's what we've done in the past, because the outcomes are great. Our folks get motivated, they go out and they find work. But our program's about engagement, it's about civic involvement, and we wanna be straight with you, and we want you to support that. We feel really bad that your process doesn't work that way. I totally understand that you don't wanna buck that new process. We're disappointed that it hasn't come down to a vote tonight. I know that's way too easy, but we're gonna push y'all and push y'all to get that funding because we need to affirmatively further equitable future for black people in this community. Eighty percent of our public housing residents, African-American women. So please, keep that in mind, use that equity lens, and think about what you're doing.
Good evening, Mayor Walker, City Councilor, City Manager Richardson and staff. I'm Angela Cholfee. I'm the Executive Director of the Legal Aid Justice Center, and I'm a great follow-on to Brandon's comments because I'm here to advocate for our racial equity program that was not funded and the community organizing in partnership with FAR and, and other groups that we do every day. First, I would like to say thank you to the team for recommending our proposal for legal services. For Charlottesville residents be funded at sixty-six percent, although we do prefer nice round numbers like a hundred percent. We were very grateful that the team agreed that our legal representation is an essential service to city residents. But we do request that you reconsider the recommendation not to fund LEJC's work supporting low-income community members in their advocacy on racial justice issues. We asked the city to provide seventy-five thousand in funding to cover a small portion, approximately fifteen percent, of the resources that LEJC currently commits to support Charlottesville low-income residents as they work to engage with the city on many of the issues that Brandon raised and on the racial equity issues that impact their lives. Specifically, we asked the city to support our efforts to provide legal and logistical assistance to FAR, CLIC, and the People's Coalition. The team rated this proposal merely helpful. We disagree. We disagree. And speaking to Counselor Snook's point and concern about Sin Barreras, which seemed to be shared by others, I note that there is no priority area for racial justice, even though that is a strategic objective of the city. Had there been, perhaps, the outcome for both Sin Barreras and LEJC might have been different. I also note that we could only select two priority areas. So, we selected public safety and housing, even though our organizing improves outcomes in all of the priority areas, and perhaps that, in fact, may have hurt us. If the city is serious about its stated priority of intentionally addressing the issues of race and equity, the city needs to consider low-income black residents' lived experiences, including their historical treatment by the city. That means giving them and other low-income residents and community members seats at the table where decisions are made. Our staff accompany low-income residents to well over one hundred public meetings each year. We provide detailed analysis, legal analysis and policy analysis, and feedback on proposed policies. We help draft and negotiate contracts. We are delighted to provide free office space to FAR, host Myriad community meetings in our offices, and provide the IT infrastructure for several groups' email listservs. We also provide logistical support for the Charlottesville area immigration raids response hotline. In many ways, LEJC currently provides to these residents and groups the kinds of support, legal and otherwise, that city staff and that the city attorney's office provides to city council. As you consider policy options and ponder the legal ramifications of the decisions you make, you can rely on John Blair to help you understand the laws and implications of the policies that, of the regulation, the ordinances that you pass and the laws that govern your powers. We actually, at Legal Aid, serve the same role for community advocates so that their advocacy is informed by high-quality legal research and legal advice tailored to their specific situation and questions. They deserve high-quality legal representation in their recommendations on policy as well. So, we ask you to reconsider whether this service is merely helpful or whether it is actually an important or integral part of a comprehensive strategy to address a city priority. And I want to speak to the quality rating for a second. I think we scored fair quality or something. And I just want to say, it's hard to judge the quality of community lawyering and organizing. We don't fit, we were not provided, we actually requested, but we're not allowed to see the score sheets. But we, I can guess that we do not fit into a rubric. But you all see the quality of our advocacy every day in front of you, and you can be the judge of the quality of the services we provide to community advocates. We would ask to fund the proposal at the same level as other important services being funded. And with all of that said, we're aware that you are facing many weighing competing priorities with a finite budget. And because we are who we are, many of our program staff will be before you advocating for other racial equity priorities, not ours. And including, but not limited to, full funding for the civilian review board, three million dollars a year for public housing redevelopment, improved rent relief and real estate tax relief programs discussed tonight, restoration of funds for the Charlottesville Affordable Housing Funding Fund, and of course, full funding for FAR's internship program. We express our full, unqualified support for these efforts. Prioritize them above our own, though we hope you will consider how these, how our efforts contribute to the success of these critical programs. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Is there anybody else?
John Navstiger with Child Health Partnership. I hadn't planned to speak, and I'll be very brief. We fell into the essential exemplary category and really appreciate the support for our work. I just wanted to note, based on the earlier discussion, and let me say first, you know, we work very closely with both Sin Barreras and International Rescue Committee and are very supportive of their work. But wanted to note to the discussion that Child Health Partnership, fifty percent of the families we work with a year are refugee or immigrant families. So, that, that amounts to about a hundred and seventy-five or a hundred and eighty families in the community. So, I just, I just wanted to make sure that council members were aware of the size of the city's commitment and support to refugee families with young children through Child Health Partnership. Thank you.
Do you know how many families Sin Barreras serves?
I don't know what their, what their number of serves is.
They gave us numbers in the thousands, right? And I'm not comparing. I kinda am, but I'm not. But I think...
That number's two thousand five hundred and ten.
Okay. And even the support, do you all support them with funding? The other organizations, or are they working that they're gonna make this work no matter what, and they assist you in being able to serve them?
We, we work with families in a lot of different ways. I mean, our work is around, focused very much on the children and family health and parents' mental health issues, as well as parenting coaching and supports in a lot of different ways.
And you have fam, you have staff members who are Hispanic?
Yes.
And how many?
We have eight or nine who are, well, who are bilingual, English, Spanish. We have four who are Latinx.
Okay. And then the IRC, how do you translate services for members coming through that?
We, in many cases, we pick up families after the four to six months when most of IRC's services are phasing out.
No, I'm asking, how do you effectively communicate with the families?
With, oh, we, we use either IR, in-person IRC interpreters or phone interpreters for all those families. We prioritize in-person when we can get that, but...
And do they provide that service based on the money that they request in their budget? Or do they pay down for the service?
We pay them for those services. Our interpretation budget is about twenty-five thousand dollars a year for all the families we work with. So, it is, it's a significant commitment for us.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mayor Walker, I think the question about Sin Barreras, if I, if I'm reading what they have said carefully, what they have said is that they request eleven thousand dollars from the city to help with services to twenty-five hundred and ten city residents. I don't think we should necessarily conclude that they're serving twenty-five hundred and ten residents, just that they would like to, just judging by the summary.
Do you remember Heather?
No.
The number?
No.
That's just the number in the Vibrant Communities document.
No, they were clear with us when we met with them. We went and sat down with them, that they provide a lot of service, in-depth, personal, from the initial and through completion of whatever it is, ranging from, you know, healthcare, filling out applications, ranging from jobs to situations with social services. They discussed, that year, we went to meet with them. There was a lot of emphasis on ICE and the fear in the community there and how much that took, you know, that took. So, and again, honoring people running organizations that benefit the staff, who are those people, versus people who've been able to build organizations who may not be. So, if Hispanic people serve Hispanic people, it is essential that we begin as a community to honor that and don't, you know, kind of... Anyway, not that I was thinking it was appropriate, so I'm just... Go ahead.
May I speak to the numbers in Sin Barreras? Just, I just wanted to note that on Monday afternoon, actually Tuesday afternoon of this week, there, of last week, there were hundreds of people rallying right outside of the building here in support of driver's license for all. Sin Barreras was one of the chief organizers of that rally, along with Legal Aid and many other groups. But they, the turnout that we got for that, hundreds of people, one of the biggest I've seen of that kind in Charlottesville was, could not have happened without Sin Barreras. And that kind of thing has a huge impact on Charlottesville community members because they, now that the driver's privilege cards has passed, that means that many of our immigrant community members no longer have to live in fear of deportation or detention just by going about their lives and driving a car and meeting the needs of their families, which is disruptive to jobs, schools for their children, family lives, financial welfare and all of that. And I think that kind of work and those kinds of numbers matter too, not just direct services.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? All right, so we're gonna close public comment.
Oh, and just one, one comment and one question for me, one final for both. But again, you know, for me, the biggest priority is what is the material impact on someone's life in these investments? And there's the conversation about, you know, big picture about the process and sort of the theoretical level of what the process is. But when there's areas where the changes equal, someone who's homeless has less access to housing or less access to being able to afford an inhaler or the undocumented community, less access to being connected with services, public housing residents, less access to being empowered and access to fresh produce and other things, I'm willing to be a little flexible in the process. When the process is creating changes, having those material impacts on people. So, I don't know if others agree, but I am willing to be a little flexible on that end. And the final question is, I know this is a whole can of worms at the end, so I'm sure there's no answer, but something hanging over all of this is potential impacts on our meals tax and lodging revenues from the coronavirus and the fact that UVA students aren't gonna be on campus. I'm sure very fewer people, very few, fewer people will be going to our hotels, you know. Even, I, we just, I think we all are, want a sense of what hit that's gonna take on the budget because I assume it's gonna be substantial.
So, we don't know what we don't know. And we're early into this whole situation. Todd, Jason, Chris Engel, Ryan, myself, several of us have looked at a couple different scenarios, which quite frankly, at this point, is just a big guess. It, it looks like for twenty, that probably what we know with our revenue projections and the way those revenues come in, there's already eight months on the books. A lot of what comes in in the next three months are for months that have already happened as well because there's some lag time. Probably for twenty, we would be okay. But it's probably could have an impact in twenty-one, but again, we don't know. And so, we're just continuing to monitor that on a close, you know, weekly or monthly or however we can, as close as we can. But we don't know, honestly.
Okay.
I share those concerns deeply. So...
I think we all do. Well, I do.
Three of them, two other people can wait in.
All right, so I guess the points where we are is... The... Get to my first page. Yeah. So, first is the question that I brought up. Is there any appetite to hire for that position and cut the funding here to start that work?
Given the cuts that are already happening to nonprofits, I don't support taking that money from the Vibrant Communities Fund if there's other areas to take that money potentially. But I see the impact on important services as already being too negative.
Would you entertain it, you wouldn't entertain it from the Equity Fund, or no?
But that's just the one time, right?
Yeah, I know.
And again, what I say it is, I mean, I, of course, would support it from anywhere because I think we would see, but I think it's essential, especially the way some of these numbers look. I know that we're cutting, but that's not gonna change the percentage that goes where it goes. I just think that this, since this is one of the first things that the program would be starting. And Michael, I hear you, and these are essential service a lot of times, but we really don't know, right? We know that they have a mission statement and that everyone is saying that they work in alignment with that. We do not know the, whether they're truly making an impact. And based on, I mean, I'm not gonna, oh, they left anyway, but if you ask people who actually receive services, they would tell you what some of those services look like. So, that's just it. I just think that until we start measuring, we are gonna be in a lot of, you know, I don't know how. I just think that's one of the key components for fixing this.
And I agree about the measuring piece, but I don't agree that we're just looking at mission statements. I understand that the group that looked at this was a very different composition of a group.
I'm not talking about your team.
Previously, and a lot of work went into this. And so, I don't wanna, I mean, I'm just, I'm struggling with that commentary.
Well, yes, that's fine. Because I have worked with people who receive these services, so it's something that I've been very passionate about because if you are giving millions of dollars away a year, and that's again, a thing that's on the backs of other people, you need to, those people's lives need to change. Not just you continue to fund an organization. And so, I understand what you're saying, and we just heard from some individuals who are doing great work, and I agree with them. But we have heard and know that, again, there are people who are not doing great work, but they are still getting money because they are able to determine what great work looks like. And all I'm asking is that we commit to the process of evaluating so that we are not guessing and just taking people... And this could come back where people, something could say the stuff that I would find, you know, important, isn't producing the outcomes that they think that it should, right? I don't know what's gonna happen, but I know we're not doing it at all. So, I just think that it's, that it's important.
Part of it for me is, you know, I haven't been involved in this process in the past, so I don't feel comfortable making a decision right now just because I'm not familiar with the process before I came on council, everything that went into that. Like, I'm not, I'm not sure what the job description is, how it fits in within the city structure because it's just something I wasn't involved in.
We don't have one yet because they would have to do it.
And it wasn't part of the original scope.
Yeah.
And again, for me, I think for it to be funded, I would, I don't know where it would come from, but I just think there may be a better area in the budget for money to come from. Because for me, the nonprofit funding can be better and more strategically allocated, but I don't see the problem being that the amount of, the total pot, like, the amount of need there is, is larger than the amount of money being allocated. It's just that the money, it's not the, so we're just taking away money for things that are already being cut in an important service. It's like, you know, that money needs to be allocated more effectively, but I don't think, I just think there's other areas of the budget that would, there would be a less negative impact to take money out of. Again, looking at the fact that we're already seeing these cuts to homelessness services, the free clinic, you know, and other areas, but again...
I understand, and that's how people end up in this situation. I think we probably gave a similar list, so we're probably saying the same thing. But I think that you end up in that situation because we don't have the tools in place to measure the outputs effectively. And we don't have the tools in place to get the feedback from the people who are actually supposed to be served. And until we figure that out, we're just gonna be spinning our wheels.
And my, my feeling, frankly, I agree with Michael on a lot of this. And I'll say again where I said once before tonight, and I've said on other occasions, I really don't like the idea of coming up with new proposals, new to me at least. They may not, but it sounds like they're even new in scope and how we're gonna define the job in the middle of a budget season. I mean, that's, I know they do it to the federal government all the time. I don't think we should emulate that. I think we should make a decision, perhaps in July or August or September, when we've had a chance to look at it and think about it. But for us to say, right now, we're just gonna take a hundred and fifteen, a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars out of the money that we're otherwise gonna be giving to people who are doing exemplary work on a vital area, that, you know, it just doesn't make a lot of sense to me. So, I'd be happy to talk about it after the budget season, but not, not now.
Okay. But I'll just add that I've been having this conversation since last year.
I'm sure you have.
Of a budget season, so I'll just point that out.
But we hadn't talked about specifically hiring a position until more recently, though.
Because...
And I agree with you entirely, by the way, Mayor Walker.
You made recommendations. Every year, this has been the first time that process has been different.
I agree.
So, I made the recommendations, but I had been having the conversation, and I had the conversation in our meeting, I had, you were there, about that this is something that's needed.
And I don't disagree that it's needed.
All right, well, there isn't fun support for that. So, the next thing was the question about whether keeping the... So the next thing was the question about, um, whether keeping the proposals as is, and, um, I'm just gonna start with that, since I started this. Um, no matter where you change these numbers to, we still are not at the answer. And so, us changing those is not gonna fix the problem either. Um, and so, that's my piece on that. It will fund some places that I think need to be funded, but if that's not the purpose, then, um, you know, we're just doing the same thing that we've been doing. So this takes a process that was supposed to have changed back to what it was before, um...
Which what does?
If we start saying, we're not gonna do ninety-seven, we're not gonna do sixty-six, fifty-five, yes.
Yes, I totally agree, yes.
We are going back to what the original process was, um...
Right, and that would've been a lot of time invested.
I just think that that is not where we're going, but I don't feel like we're going there anyway, so...
Well, again, um, you, as I said before, you know, what I'm thinking and focused about most is what is the material impact on people's day-to-day lives? More importantly than a discussion about is, and to me, the process is, it may be better than what was before, but I don't think it's perfect. And so, um, I am interested in not upending the whole thing by any means, but finding ways to fund, in particular, the foreign internship program, the free clinic, Sin Barreras, and, um, those are the major priorities. There are other things that I think could be funded as well, when you're looking at the, how the change in this process has disproportionately impacted, um, their ability to operate programs. But if I had to identify top ones to try and fund, those would, again, be trying to find ways to fund the foreign internship program, the free clinic in Sin Barreras. Um, the amount of money that may even be able to be covered by that seventy thousand dollars. Um, but again, I, I don't wanna upend the whole process, but I'm willing to be a little bit flexible, recognizing that, um, no process is gonna be perfect, and there may be an inadvertent impact on, um, programs that are important to people's day-to-day lives.
Are you suggesting we would fully fund those initiatives, considering that some of the other parts of this matrix that people even scored higher on did not get full funding? Or would you wanna be more in line with the s, the essential solid or the exemplary important? 'Cause I think that, like, fully funding is like jumping away, like, ju, like, jumping over one whole category and then going up into the upper-left corner. And I, I have some pause about just us doing that without a process.
Yeah, I'd be, it may not be full funding, but just again, interested in, in funding at some level where the program is not
Okay.
not able to function anymore. Um, I know Legal Aid Justice Center, like, their, their request was, right now, was not full funding for this community organizing. I think it was like around half or something like that. Again, my, my, I'm just interested in the material impact. If a lack of investment means that a program that we all agree is important can no longer exist.
I was just noticing that the, if you add up the amounts of money that people spoke in, in favor of tonight, uh, and these are all programs that fit, pretty much, they all fit into the, uh, solid but important category, you get about a hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars. Supposing we said, and, and not, and this is at least a way to think about it. Supposing we said we, we've given ninety-seven percent to the exemplary essentials, sixty-six percent to the solid essential, fifty-five percent for the exemplary important. Supposing we said we give forty percent, uh, for the solid important, and that puts you at about sixty-seven thousand dollars.
You had a bigger number than that, right?
But it increases all of the...
I'm just talking about the ones that, that, that people spoke in favor of.
So which ones were you referring to, 'cause not everyone fell in that category.
Yeah, I was saying, because the entire solid important was somewhere around four hundred thousand dollars.
And I, I really am hesitant to only represent those people who spoke tonight. I just, I, that is not a game I wanna play, um, because then we're creating this, we already are, feel pressure from this environment, and it's not my favorite environment, is being here and people just coming and telling us, because it's super heart-wrenching. But if we are all of a sudden rewarding people doing it, I, I'm just, I don't find that to be a process I'm, I'm gonna support.
Well, and I, I, I mean, I'm probably not ready to make a, like, a decision tonight, but again, I, in my opinion, this process, previous process was flawed as well, but this process is not perfect and has problems, and is having unintended consequences that we should be willing to be acknowledged.
No, I think it is not having unintended consequences. I think that we all are different people and we find value in different things. So we knew that this process was gonna be like this, right? Um, but again, we are still basing this on information that does not include the people who are being served. So again, you know, some people who spoke may think that whatever is essential, not going down the l...
I mean, T-Jack is two other programs that just weren't here to speak today, but like, I'm like, I don't wanna say that someone...
Again, well, is, I, I just think a process where you're not evaluating the relative impact on the capacity of an organization and making blind funding decisions has had unintended consequences on some programs that are, I, I would think there's a consensus that are very important.
I, I felt like we had a category for looking at that.
And that the impact is gonna eliminate the capacity for certain programs to exist.
We don't have the mechanism for assessing need of the organization.
Right.
But in terms of, like, capacity building was one way that we helped.
We said we were gonna, we were gonna provide funds to help organizations build capacity, but we don't have a mechanism as a team or as a staff, or frankly, as a prioritization strategy from you all to, to identify or evaluate need, which is on our minds. We keep hearing about it. It's on our minds to try to figure out how to do that, if that's a priority for you all next year, in addition to perhaps identifying an equity priority. But that, those were not the priorities that we started this process with last summer.
And can you give me a sense of the composition of, 'cause one of the slides you saw talked about just the composition of the evaluation group being different from what it has been in the past?
So fifty-four percent people of color, I think it's forty percent were people who had, were low-income and were, uh, we paid for their participation. Everyone had some experience as a consumer of a nonprofit of some kind.
So I think those people are much better suited to judge these things than I am.
No, not based on that list, but I'm gonna keep, reserve that comment. I get what you're saying.
I think last year, we discussed...
It's better.
We discussed the fact that we don't have a mechanism for gathering input from community members. We do have, we, we respond to, we ask the nonprofits to identify how it is that they evaluate their services, what kinds of survey results, what kind of survey results they use, um, and how they in, they use those, uh, results from consumers to a, to adjust their practices. We ask that, we, it's part of our evaluative tool. But we recognize that as part of your work group, that we don't have a mechanism for hearing from the community writ large about what services they would like to see more of, what services work for them, whether they're receiving services or not. We hear individually from people that there are services that they have to go to, but they don't feel particularly welcome. They don't feel particularly heard, and I see, I do think that there's, uh, lots and lots of room and opportunity for us to hear from consumers in a better way, and that is one of the primary focuses for the Measurements and Solutions Group. We're, we're just halfway through a change process. We're not, we're not there yet. I'm, I, Mayor Walker and I have had this conversation many times, but I have faith that our process can get there. We're just not there yet.
Yeah, but we're still, the, for me, that's where the process starts. That's not what we get to.
Well, so we were asked to implement these changes with one year and not two.
I know it's not a, and this is not a, it's, I'm being critical, but I'm not, I appreciate the work you all have done. I just have some concerns, um, and, uh, how we're gonna get there. Um, and, I mean, I think we have more counselors now who provided direct services in a nonprofit setting, so you just understand that from a completely different, um, place than even when we were having this discussion initially. But, um, the communities that people are saying they serve that receive the most funding, um, you're not hearing from a lot of the people. But anyway, so, Sina, do you have any thing to share?
No, I'm just listening.
What are we trying to accomplish tonight? 'Cause I'm sorry, I do have to go.
No, so we're just, are we leaving it, or that's it? Like, that's where we are or not, and then we need to talk about the seventy thousand dollars?
Again, I just, I think the goal is accurate. The goal of needing a process change is accurate, but I don't know if this process is achieving that goal a hundred percent. It's in the right direction, but not a hundred percent. And because of that, I am open to tweaking pieces of it when we're looking at programs that are now not being funded, that may not be able to, uh, operate anymore.
And you're essentially saying tweak the process, so people who are doing really good work gets, get money, but continue to give people just because they were a part of the process, funding that may be doing really good work, right? That still is not fixing it.
It doesn't fix the overall process, but it fixes
I understand.
specific problems that exist.
Is there support for the keeping it, changing it? That's where we are. And I don't have a...
How mu, how many new nonprofits got money this year?
Uh, can you define what you mean by new nonprofits? Profits that hadn't previously received funding from, from the city before, or nonprofits that, I mean, because one of the, one of the things in the, or one of the requirements to be able to apply is that the program itself has to have been in operation for two years, so that, that is...
No, no, I meant that, it said that, I mean, it was stated earlier that one of the reasons we were looking at redoing this was that there had been a complaint amongst new nonprofits that they were unable to really compete. So I was curious, in this new process, how many new nonprofits were awarded funding?
One.
One. Ha, Habitat. Habitat for Humanity is the, the one process, the one agency.
That's my point.
I, listen, I...
No, 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 so my whole thing then is, if the full process was...
Well, can I answer you before you, um...
Oh, yeah, sure.
'Cause that was just one part of it. Um, the capacity building was really what was supposed to meet that need, and the grant amounts that they were given is, I guess, what was decided after our meeting. Like, what level, 'cause it was higher. Was it up to twenty-five thousand?
Ten, for capacity building.
It's always been ten, okay.
Well, this is the first year we've ever, yeah.
No, but I mean, in our discussion, didn't we talk about during the meeting?
No, we talked about having the programmatic based on the priority areas be potentially have two or three grants of two hundred thousand or more, something like that. And we were curious to see if we had no limits, what would happen? Would people come back, come with a proposal for a really big project that would cost a lot of money and would have a significant impact? And I think, you know, honestly, that I think the nonprofits were somewhere in between. Like, do they really mean we can ask for more than what we've had before, or should we stick with what we had before? And they weren't really sure or particularly trusting of what our process was gonna look like, so...
But some of them did.
Some of them did, and some of them...
Hundred percent, a hundred forty-eight percent, eighty-three percent, eighty-six percent, a hundred twenty-four percent. Okay, so...
So I guess at this point, the, the, for, for the staff perspective, we have the seventy thousand dollars worth of unallocated funding that it, that is there that can be reallocated to particular agencies should council decide to do so. Or an alternative would be to, um, if you don't wanna spend all of that or none of that at that point, you can essentially hold that funding for agency requests that come up before... No, I understand, I'm just, I'm just providing alternatives, but where we are is if we want to fund additional agencies, I think we would need to know that, especially if there is something that council comes back and says above the seventy, yeah.
Yeah.
What's the important solid total, sorry? Important solid total?
The important solid, for how many, what was the request?
For everybody.
It was roughly, uh, four hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars, I believe, somewhere in that?
I think you may be...
Four, four hundred and thirty thousand dollars.
I, I just went through it all, and I came out with about three hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. There is one thing that's in that category that is a hundred and forty thousand dollars that is, is a mistake. That's right. So I got three, about three hundred, and I, I, I may have been off on my math, but three fifteen, uh, following the two B. And the other one that I would wanna give some money to is, um, uh, Sin Barreras, which is, what, three C or something?
What was your first one?
The important solids.
Now, what was the first one you wanted to do?
Well, the, the, the two Bs, the important solids, come, by my count, come to about three hundred and fifteen thousand dollars.
Is that what you have? You have something different?
I would, um, I, I would have to go, I will have to go back and double-check that. I mean, I can do some...
I know one number...
I just did look, I've got, I've got a spreadsheet here, but then I can do some quick math on that to, to make sure on that, so...
I was just scanning it, so you're probably more right, but one of the things that came up in that scan was a hundred and forty thousand dollars that was, was an error.
For who?
Uh, was that the...
That, that was a typo in the book.
Right.
It was for one of the, um, T-Jack programs. We copied the dollar amount from the one above.
Supportive Housing.
Or what was in the city budget? It was just what was listed in the city budget, or they wouldn't get the ass?
Yeah, Virginia Supportive Housing, it's off by a hundred and twenty thousand dollars.
Oh, yeah, 'cause I, I caught that on the, on the text part, but I don't think it was in the actual charts.
I don't know, I didn't look at the charts. I was just going through the text.
Okay, so...
I guess the question is...
Go ahead.
One thing I had asked for, um, Ryan had provided, was if there was a percentage, a percentage it would be of all of the, the two B categories? And that would've been about sixteen percent, I believe, of the seventy thousand dollars a piece that was remaining?
Uh, yeah, I'd need to, I'd need to, I'm, I'm pulling, I'm trying to pull all these up right now just to double-check all the, the math and the categories on everything. But it looks like, based on my quick calculations here, it's, it's roughly three hundred, it's actually roughly three hundred thousand dollars um, for the, uh, important solid, um, category.
And then another, again, for me, another eleven thousand dollars for Sin Barreras. But, and that's not trying to draw in other of the three Cs or whatever we're calling them, just to pro... Yeah, I, I may just say this about Sin Barreras. I've, I've dealt with Sin Barreras in a number of ways in, uh, where they've asked for money from organizations I've been a part of. They are not good grant writers, but they're a good organization.
That's certainly the conversation that last year's council had at this time about Sin Barreras.
So, yeah, and I, I, so I did do the math on this, and if, um, if we were to take the two B category and say, what would, could we fund it at if we used the entire seventy thousand dollars? That, that would be roughly twenty, uh, twenty-four percent with the, the new, um, the new figure I have. I think my previous figure had, was adding something in from a, a different category, so...
I mean, I just, I want... If we start picking and choosing too much amongst the actual grantee, we're totally devaluing the process and all the work that's been done to get through this process, even if the process is, is far from perfect at the moment. Um, I mean, I, I am for trying to fund some, a, a person to make this process work better. Um, but I understand that, that is, it's too painful right now to do that with money. Um, uh, so I'm, I mean, this would, it would be my suggestion that we then fund the two B category. I mean, I, I can't justify as much as I want to for some places to be skipping around and saying, well, I just, and maybe there's another opportunity for some of those other agencies to come forward at a later date, um, to ask council if they're really struggling to utilize strategic funds or something. I don't know.
Well, if we have seventy thousand and we have a percentage that we wanna say we wanna do of this one category plus Sin Barreras, it sounds like, um, how much are we willing to go into our strategic funds to get there, is the question? And what, what is that percentage we wanna try to achieve? And then that minus seventy thousand dollars is the amount we're gonna have to get from our own sources.
Yeah, so that's still two separate questions, 'cause that's one-time funding versus you would be changing the percentages here, right?
Oh, I don't consider this something that, like, this, the amount we totally fund every year is something we evaluate. I don't con, it's not operational, so I, I look at this very differently. If we, if we wanna close a gap here, I don't feel that it's forcing a future council to commit to that total amount for Vibrant Communities.
I mean, as we've discussed here with this, um, the one thing I will point out is that with all these questions that are hanging out there with the process and the work left to do with the Measurements and Solutions, and the, this capacity question that is out there, um, this could look very, very different next year, so this may not, so you're correct of that, is this may not be even how this looks next year when we get here at this point in time. We just, there's a lot of unknowns still left on, in the process changes. So there is that piece, but, and, and I did rerun the quick math again for everybody to do Sin Barreras, which is, I, I seem to be hearing a, quite a consensus amongst that, and some portion of the two B would be twenty percent of the two B plus Sin Barreras. Um, that would be, I, I don't know what proportion, but if you fully funded them, that would give, that would take it roughly sixty-nine thousand dollars of the seventy thousand dollars, so.
But then we also, again, I support both of those, but we, I don't know what happened with um, the legal aid. I, I don't think that they were B, right, and so, and I'm just going back to that, um, that we all know, well, at least I'll just speak for myself, that we got headaches based on their advocacy, which is important. Okay? And so.
I agree.
So they're not in the category, but again, um, like if we start doing this, I have a lot of comments.
I didn't realize there were three C.
Yeah, they're not um, here, and then it's um, I got um, plenty of comments.
That's why I was just at the category, not at the people in it. I don't even know who else is in two B.
Yeah, and so, and that, I have some concerns about some of the people in the category, again.
Which again is, is, I, I, I just have.
So we're right back?
Right, I just have hesitation that our process is achieving our goal.
But, so.
I'm, I'm also very uncomfortable with us inserting our personal opinions of some of these organizations, so I'm just put, I'm just really struggling with that.
It's not inserting. I'm, I don't think that you do this work without sharing, right? Um, and that's why I have been, all the, you haven't heard me say one time that I'm trying to deviate from what we agreed on, because I do have a lot of concerns. I have worked with and for some of these agencies. Um, and I am concerned about um, what the community still says about them, and I have my body in the community, ear to the community, eyes to the community, and all of that, so I have a lot of concerns, which is why I'm so passionate about this. And I think just if that's where we're going, which you were just sitting there trying to figure out with them, I have something to say about that process, um, too, is all I'm saying. And we're not fixing it.
We, we can also just say that we're gonna stick with what's been recommended and hold on to the seventy thousand? I don't know, I just know, I, I do have to leave shortly, so I'm trying to figure out.
So maybe we close, and, I mean, if you all are, you know, gonna decide, I, 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 for me, my vote is that I don't really wanna vote, but I, any suggestions, even including this one, is not fixing, I think, the main issue. And so nothing, I don't think that we do will change that part long-term, and I'm, that's what I'm looking at. And there are organizations that I do wanna discuss um, using this additional money for. And that's what I, that's my comment.
Supposing we simply said, I mean, the only things I think that we have to decide tonight are things that are going to be necessary for the staff to have additional direction for. And I don't know that they need additional direction for how we spend two hundred and, you know, what is that? Uh, the two point three million dollars, particularly the other seventy thousand dollars. So I think we can hold that issue in abeyance. I think we've decided most of the things that staff needs to go back and do other work on or, or something.
Yeah, the main question is whether we're keeping the ninety-seven, sixty-six, and fifty-five, and is there support for that? Or is someone presenting something else? And I don't have a, anything to present, and I have some questions about this too. So there are four people, we need three. What are you all proposing, and what are you gonna vote on?
I'm fine with the percentages and not making a decision about the seventy thousand dollars.
Yeah, if we're, I mean, the seventy, if we're, if, the one thing we would need guidance on would be if the additions to this list are up above and beyond the seventy thousand dollars. If it's within that seventy thousand dollars, then you're right.
Yeah.
We can make that decision at the, the next work session or, or the one after that. Um, if it's any, if you decide you need to go above and beyond that, and we have to somehow, and you don't have a, a source like the council uh, strategic initiatives, then that means staff has to, again, go back and say, this is where we would recommend those dollars coming from, and that direction we do need, because we're, I mean, we're down to our last two work sessions, so there is limited time and, and.
If that's the direction you need, I will say for myself that I'm comfortable with the seventy-plus leveraging strategic funds from the council initiative, not asking for you to go to any other funding sources to accomplish this, whatever we end up deciding. That's me.
I don't agree with that.
I'm fine with that, too.
Sina, Michael.
I'm sorry, what are we actually, what it just?
We're asking, we're, I, I just stated, and Lloyd agree, has supported that we're not gonna, I, I'm not looking to seek funds from other sources beyond the source that what we've already allocated for the Vibrant Communities Fund or Council Strategic Initiatives. There's no other funding sources. I'm looking for staff to look forward to, to fill any further gaps for this funding specifically. Cause we just got them to kind of balance things out earlier, and I'm just trying to minimize more of that churn by saying that I support us solving this with the Vibrant Community Funds and/or um, our strategic initiatives account.
I'll agree to that.
I mean, I guess I would prefer to try to just lock it to the Vibrant Community Fund, but.
Oh, sure, but give flexibility. Just give them direction that we're not gonna go anywhere else with it.
No more on work.
We've, we've, we've got, we've got enough, uh, we, to keep us busy, so that's. I think we're good, so.
Alright. Alright. Are there any um, further public comment? Nope, alright, meeting adjourned.
Thank you.